We're gonna, um, we're gonna open up the, um, selectmen meeting, uh, Tuesday, May thirty first, two thousand sixteen, if we can stand the federal allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there anyone in here for public comment?
Can you approve the minutes, please?
I can read them.
Read them, approve them?
Sure.
Motion to approve payroll warrant number sixteen dash forty-nine in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixteen cents.
I'll second that.
Second? Any other discussion? Anyone in favor?
Motion to approve deduction warrant number sixteen dash forty-seven A in the amount of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep. Motion to approve bill warrant number sixteen dash forty-nine in the amount of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, thirty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Anyone in favor?
Yep.
Okay, moving on. We have an appointment of Elaine Davey of one eighty Washington Street, Groveland, to fill, um, a Groveland Housing Authority vacancy effective June two thousand sixteen. The appointment is made until the next annual election. At that time, there will be an election to fill the remainder of the vacancy, May of two thousand eighteen. So can I get a motion to appoint?
I'll make the motion to appoint her.
Second? Second, and any further discussion?
Uh, she's at baseball. She's not here.
All in favor?
Yep.
All right. We have another appointment for Josh Crutow of twenty-one Pleasant Street, Groveland, to the position of the temporary seasonal cemetery keeper, effective June first, two thousand sixteen. The position will work no more than thirty-two hours per week at a rate of ten dollars and fifty cents an hour. Can I get a motion to?
I'll make the motion that we, uh, point Josh Crutow, temporary seasonal groundskeeper at the cemetery at ten fifty an hour.
Second? And any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Yep.
All right, so moving down, we have the fire range update. Looks like they're all here, possibly.
Good evening and thank you for having us. Jeff Gillen, the deputy chief for the police department. We have boss Ed Fornia here tonight and Chief Kamelowitz. Our purpose tonight is to respectfully request a, um, final approval of our plan. And, um, my son Kyle, actually, one of the last projects he did before he graduated from college, uh, a few weeks ago, has produced a, uh, a video. It's less than a minute and it, it gives a good description, uh, somewhat idea of what we're trying to accomplish with our plan. When I say "we," I, I gotta really give the credit to Officer Fornia. He's spent countless hours on this project. He's worked with many committees, made several phone calls, been as transparent as we can and, um, provided as many answers as we could. Um, I think we're there and I, I think, um, we're ready for a decision to be made. I can tell you the last two boards did support this project and we actually have three thousand dollars in an account that we're gonna lose if we don't get this project going in the next month. Um, so Ed's here too also to answer more specific questions.
Well, I, I took it upon myself to go visit the site back when we had the conversation and me being in the business, I, I went out with the foreman from the highway. He took, opened the gate, he let me in there. I can clearly see the site, I can clearly understand what you're doing and I can clearly see that it's going to be down, it's gonna be burned, it's gonna have trees and, and all that. I can clearly see it wouldn't be, I'm just saying me, it would not be a hindrance to anyone unless someone was waving a gun in the air or whatever. You'd have to be going crazy to get it out of there. But, um, like I said, I just wanted to be able to have this hearing tonight and be able to hear it and understand it, that's why I did it. And I know I've been over the station when you were there and I've seen the hours you've have worked and again, I thank you as the chair of the board for all your hours you've put in. Um, so go ahead and...
Could we see the video too Denise?
Yep. Let me shut the slide here first.
Again, it's very short. That is Ed actually standing there, by the way.
All right.
So we, we really don't have a lot more to offer unless you need us to answer questions. We've talked about case law, we talked about liability, we talked about the need for the, uh, for the range.
Did you, did you, um, and I didn't see it on here, did you have hours of, of when you were planning to have that open to lease use or for training for other towns or?
Yes.
What were you gonna charge? Is that on here? I didn't see it.
I don't know that there was a fee, I'll let Ed talk on that.
The main purpose was to get us into it so we could do the adequate training. Primarily gonna be used Monday through Friday during the weekdays, occasional Saturday, occasional weekend here and there as needed. However, it's primarily gonna be Monday through Friday days, normal business hours. We do, because of liability, we do have to shoot on an occasion, more towards the evening because we do have to train in low light. Now, we're not talking after dark, we're talking lower light, but that's something we planned on doing when it starts getting dark around four thirty-five o'clock. So we're, we're still within that ballpark. And, um, you know, and again, that's on an occasion, we, we just have to prove that we are training that, that's not gonna happen every year, but on occasion, we, we are gonna have to do it to meet the requirements.
I think some of the concern, and that's just something that people have told me, is that, you know, there're gonna be noise issues down there, safety issues down there. So is this something where you're gonna just, uh, where you're gonna make it a, uh, announcement that, hey, we're, firing range is open now, you know, from Monday to Thursday, five to seven, uh, so if you hear gunshots, that's most likely what it is?
We, that's something that, like, we could put on our website, I'm sure, with the depth, like, if the range is gonna be used a particular day during certain hours to do that. The misconception is, is that when we train, it's continuous gunfire.
Right.
It's not. You may have a volley of gunfire, then it turns around and it slows down for a bit and it goes, you know, it goes on from there. But yeah, we can work with the website and have it up on the website for days it's gonna be used and approximate hours.
Okay, I think that would help.
Can I just clarify? In prior discussions, I think the idea was, you know, twelve or fifteen times a year that this, it wasn't gonna be used five days a week.
Right.
So I do wanna clarify, it's not Monday through Thursday or Friday every week, it's...
Periodic throughout the season.
Yes.
Correct.
Right. And the other thing is that, that, I mean, it just talk, but people say, oh my god, one of the bullets are gonna get sprayed, it's gonna spray, it's gonna go to people walking in the walking trails. It ain't gonna happen because it's gonna be so down, it's gonna be so burned, it, I've, I've seen the site. It, it, I can see that it won't, unless you, like I say, unless you're running around playing with a gun. I can't believe it's not gonna get up over those berms or what have you.
And if you see the berm design being fifteen, twenty feet high, you could be actually walking on the outside of that berm and you're totally safe.
And, and as, as you look at that picture too, you've been down there, there's trees, there's tree cover, there's a, there's major tree cover all around that site. Uh, it's not like just brush, it's tree cover. So, I mean, anyone to be in there, you wouldn't be in there walking in such heavy, thick tree cover.
And the reason why that site was particularly picked was because of the location, it can be accessed, accessed from the highway department.
Right.
And even the direction that we're shooting, there's all kinds of tree cover.
Right.
In that direction, we didn't want something where we, where we're gonna have people being able to walk around at three hundred and sixty degrees.
Right, and, and also the tree, the reason I mentioned the tree cover, 'cause the tree cover's gonna, if any, if you heard any noise, the tree cover would muffle the noise as well.
Correct.
Even being so low.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you know, like, twenty, twenty-five years ago, that was our primary location to, to, uh, do our firing.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Angelini was kind enough to let us use the area when it had the bigger piles of sand.
Yep.
And shame on us, we didn't probably think about some of the safety that we, we think about today. We would just shoot into a huge pile of sand and, um, the complaints were very few and the, the concerns and safety, there were, there was nothing that was of any concern at the time anyways.
Well, one of the things I would look at as being a, you know, a selectman, I would worry about traffic for the neighbors. I don't worry about that because it's only gonna be used a dozen times a year maybe, so it's not like it's adding traffic onto that road. So I don't believe traffic would be an issue at all. Um, and like I said, I'm comfortable, I've, I've walked the site, I've seen it, I personally am comfortable with the site, um, that noise wouldn't be a problem. And I would be the most critical one here about noise and traffic. I think it would be covered. Um, so I, I'm, I'm definitely for it and I think it would be a good thing, it's gonna save the town money and we don't have to pay to go out and, and use other facilities and it's not gonna be heavily used to the point where it's gonna be a nuisance. So, I'm, I'm good with it. I don't know if someone else wants to speak on behalf of it.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, I go further back than using that, I go back to when they were using the old Pine Speedway. Probably more than twenty-five years ago. Uh, but I, uh, and I've looked over the drawings, read all the paperwork, it seems like it's, it's, it's gonna be a safe area and the, Billy, it's not gonna be, uh, used that often. Do we need to, do we need to take a, a motion and take a vote? Uh, how do we proceed from here? Go ahead, Ed.
Just a couple of questions real quick. What kind of weapons are you gonna use? Is it mainly service revolvers or automatic weapons, shotguns?
Uh, it's, it's gonna be limited to, uh, duty weapons, our, uh, patrol rifles and shotguns because if, um, me being a firearms instructor, I have to requalify in the shotguns even though we don't carry them. But there's gonna be no, strictly no, um, automatic fire and one of the biggest reasons is with the, the lead-free ammo that we're going to use, fully auto, will never feed through it.
Okay.
No.
And you estimate the yearly savings in, in training off-site to be approximately?
Uh, basically, to give you an idea is, uh, if we have to go off-site, the range fees for one day is a thousand dollars. That's not including the overtime, the reserve pay, um, the lead-free ammo, and I'd have to split the department in half to do it because it's local, it's, won't be local. So you're talking a minimum of two days, maybe three, at a three thousand dollars right off the bat just to use the range for the day.
Now, is there opportunities as well to bring other forces in and train them at a fee?
We do, we are gonna have the ability with this range to turn around and one, post a class every now and then, which we have done in the past with non-shooting classes, where if we have X number of students, we may get up to one to three officers that can actually train in that course for free. And then I do have the ability to, I'm certified to teach what they call the Reserve and Commitment Firearms Training Course, which is in need right now and we, it's, um, a one day at the range or a day and a half at the range at most, the rest of it's classroom. And yes, we could charge a fee for that also and bring money into the town that way. But again, that class won't be a, like, a weekly thing, that may be a month here, another month here.
Great, thank you.
Do you have anything you wanna say?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, you know, what the total cost is gonna be, uh...
What?
What's it gonna cost?
To build it?
Well, the three thousand dollars originally that we have today was to take down the existing highway fence, just 'cause that has to come down before the build it. The highway department's doing all the moving of the land. Um, and so, uh, you know, Bob Aracale and China sometimes, he's like, it's not gonna cost anything, but I had to get a number from him, he says a thousand dollars for fuel to, to put the berms up.
Under five thousand dollars.
What's that?
Under five thousand dollars.
The, the other expense would be is, um, which were, would be putting the fence back up around it, which they'd be, which the cost would be cut down because we're gonna use a lot of the raw materials of the existing fence and then maybe adding a little bit more fencing in it and the labor for that. So, I'm gonna save maybe five, five thousand.
Uh, ju, my, my concerns are, you know, I'm, it, it's a good location for what you need for now, but, um, down the road, you know, who knows what's gonna happen to that property over there, there's a lot of ideas, there might be some brainstorming whether I have to put a park or, or people want some housing over there, whatever ends up there, you know? If you had to move it to another location, I don't wanna dump a lot of money into it, they'd have to play musical firing ranges with it. But for now, I mean, it's, it seems like an isolated spot. Um, I don't know, uh, what'll happen, you know, five, ten years from now, but, you know, five thousand dollars, certainly you're gonna recoup your costs there, you could probably recoup your costs in a...
And that number I would have to get from...
In, in a few user fees, you know? I mean, if you hosted a couple other, uh, police departments, right?
And the final cost of the fence would be have to, it would, it's very hard for the, uh, the fence company to give me an estimate because we, we're not sure exactly what the outline and dimensions were gonna be because of the berm.
So...
And, and actually, you could put a park right in that same location and it'd be totally safe. And one of the ideas was is that if a developer was gonna put houses there, what you do is you put it on the developer to put that same wall up that they see on the highways.
Yeah, the sound barrier wall.
Sound barriers. And you lay that all on the developer themselves to, you know, if you wanna develop here, you, you put that up.
And also, if I can just add, if a developer, we have to make sure that we get them to write it into the, uh, the deeds, that there's a firing range there so that they know that and as, as is done at other places, as you know.
Correct.
Does it help? Not really, but, uh, at least they can't come back and say they didn't know it wasn't there.
If...
Yeah, yeah.
On the, on the side, I'll call it the north side, that's where the rail trail would be, and I'm talking down the road. If it be, is that gonna be fenced in right now or it'd be at a later date?
The rail trail?
No, no, the fence on the, on the, on your project, on the north side of it, that's the side that would face, say, School Street, not, not Center Street but not ninety-seven but the other end, would that be fenced in now or at a later date?
Well, the berm, the berm would be there now.
Right, right.
But the whole idea would be is to fence that entire area.
And the only reason I say that, even if we have to do a temporary fence or something, is not now, it's, it's tree covered, I can see that, but if they did something out there, they probably should do something from some kid or something wandering in there, at least the chain fence would stop them from wandering in. The, the end, the far end, it's such tree cover, you're not getting in there. I mean, you probably could if you'd worked at it, but, um, I mean, this is something down the road. Is there any money in the budget you guys can save to ultimately, if that, we need to fence it in, that we could do that or?
We only have the three thousand right now, but I think this is gonna be seen as a work in progress.
Right, so it would probably build some money in the future to...
And if it's not safe, we just won't do it, for, you know, we'll get what we can done and...
Right.
And, uh, utilize it or if we have to station an officer who's not shooting outside for now or whatever we have to do to make everybody comfortable, but...
Yeah.
The idea is like Ed said, to fence in the whole area.
Right, okay. All right, I'm good, anyone else?
The five thousand dollars you spoke to Selectman McDonald about, that covers the wooden structures you show in your diagram here or just the fence?
Those wooden structures are, those wooden structures are for, um, what do you call it, um, the purposes of the video. We're gonna have standalone targets out there so we wouldn't have to build that. And, um, I'm working with the highway department now on a, when we have to put the eyebrow over it, but that shouldn't be that expensive at all because it's gonna be a matter of a couple of telephone poles and corrugated metal to keep that impacted area dry, which from what I understand, the corrugated metal isn't that expensive at all.
No.
Okay, I got you.
Got that to do. Okay.
Mike wants to say something.
Oh, Mike?
Oh, Mike.
Oh, Mike, okay.
Mike Dempsey, Conservation Commission, uh, so did we get the MESA permit?
The, I spoke to the woman over there with that checklist.
Yes.
And I've been working with her on the checklist.
Okay.
And I got all the maps done, the drawing done, which I told her I was gonna be driving them down. The only thing is the contact information and stuff. I started filling it out and then realized that that's something the town should actually be filling out, not me, on it. Um, so I could get somebody to fill that out and they originally wanted GIS maps and everything else like that, but I've been in contact with her, I told her that there's already a, a plan for that whole property developed.
Ed, hold on, hold on. Mike, back up a step, tell us what you're talking about, let the people know.
Okay, so, we took a walk out there, Dan, and Ed was there back in March, uh, the end of March, and so we asked, uh, natural heritage endangered species to come out. So they came out, they were good enough to come out and see the site. So we asked them what we would have to do, so this was their response, uh, back then on March thirty-first. They said, "As requested, here's a link to the MESA project review checklist. The checklist included the associated attachment fees that we need to be submitted by the town and an official determination received in advance of any additional site work associated with the proposed shooting range. Don't hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns. In this case, because the town appears to be in the very early stages of planning for the property as a whole, we are comfortable allowing this phase of the project to proceed in advance of permitting the larger development plans being contemplated for the property. As we discussed, it may be possible to redesign or reconfigure the larger project to avoid a take of state-listed turtle species. If it isn't possible to avoid a take, we look forward to working with you to minimize the impacts as much as possible and ensure that the proposed net benefit mitigation plan meets the performance standards for a conservation and management permit." So they, they definitely want us to file for a, uh, permit to do this and...
So is it something that's required or they want it?
No, it's required.
So when they said in the, and tell me if I'm wrong, 'cause I'm gonna act ignorant for a minute. So they're saying, from what I read on that thing, you can take a piece of the bigger parcel and mitigate it, you can go ahead and use this parcel right now, but you may have to mitigate the bigger parcel at a later date.
There...
So hold on.
Okay.
So that, so the little parcel that he's talking about...
Yep.
He can go ahead, they can do their thing.
No.
Why? Because it said you're gonna mitigate the bigger parcel later?
No, it said it's, they don't want, normally what they would do is they wouldn't let us do anything without considering that whole site. They would wanna see a plan for the whole site. What they said is they're willing to look at a plan for this small site without seeing the whole plan for the whole site.
And what do they, what, what jurisdiction do they have over that land? What, what's their jurisdiction? What, what's their, their whole piece on it?
Well, because it's habitat, endangered species habitat, they, anything we do there, we have to file with them and get a permit.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Um, when I got the checklist, I started going through the checklist verbatim and I found it to be a lo, real time-consuming for what they wanted. So I called down there myself to the contact person, I believe her name was Anne, that's on the checklist. I explained to her that when Mr. Dempsey, we were out there, had a whole plan of where he had properties and so forth, told her I was doing the G I, GIS maps and everything. She looked up, they, it's an N H E S P number and she was happy with the fact of, and I just spoke to her recently, she's happy with us submitting this plan here...
Mm-hmm.
...of what the range was, a Google map outlining where the range was going to go behind the present highway and to complete this, which I think the town should be doing, and submit that and that should work.
Okay. All right.
So that, so that needs to be done and then they'll do the hearing process and everything else and then perhaps decide to issue a permit to us. But until we do that, I don't see how we can move forward.
She, she originally told me that by submitting that, where they've already been involved with the property, dealing with the Angelini side, everything else like that, this is not, this is nothing new or secret to them.
Right.
That hopefully this should be fast and furious.
Right. It's ten thousand square feet, it's a very small parcel of land, we're not talking ponds, we're not talking acreage, we're talking ten thousand square feet. It's absolutely small. Do we have anyone that can get this paperwork? I know you have a lot in your place.
I don't even know, I've never seen the paperwork, so I don't know what this...
I'm just saying, can, do we have someone that can fill it out?
Ed, uh, after looking at the paperwork, who, who do you feel would be the, the best person to be filling that paperwork out?
Hey, it, I just, it's asking for some stuff that, that, um, I have no idea because it, it has to come from the town.
Okay.
You know, actually, you know, um...
Such as?
Representatives. I start, I have the blank copies, I started filling that out and then realized...
Right.
And I'm under the impression that this may have been fi, filled out before when the turtle project was, was developed.
That's what it is. It's a final, it's a fee, it's a permit. It's a permit fee. It's a permit fee is what they basically want. All right, well, show to Denise and see if, does anyone wanna say it's on here?
Well, when you, you said the town should be filling it out, I mean, what agent of the town or, or work of the town?
Well, basically you're saying property location, who the applicant's gonna be, you know, which should be the town, uh, the property owner, um, representative, who's gonna be the representative, contact person for that, for that particular property. Um, and then some of the, uh, checklist we don't have to do, we don't have to do the USGS maps, uh, from what Anne was advising.
It should probably be him as the representative.
My recollection was that, um, I thought he said that it may not require, um, I thought that they had to look at it first, 'cause again, if they require a permit that it requires state oversight or something, I, I thought she said something along the line, it may not require permitting and so that they wouldn't have to monitor it or something. I thought that was the gist of what the conversation was, but again, it was tentative and you have to see all the plans in order to make that determination, so I, I didn't...
It may not require a level, because they may not say that it's a take of her habitat. In that case, then...
The highway grudge will butt it.
Right, but that doesn't matter, but...
It doesn't matter, there's trucks and...
No, but I'm saying that's already, that's already permitted.
All kinds of stuff out there, it doesn't matter?
If they determine it to be a take, then they're gonna maintain...
Yeah, right.
Monitoring authority over it, it'll be a, a, a regulatory involvement.
Right.
Um, if we submit plans and they don't require that, then I think it's...
Right, then it might go through, as Ed said, it...
It's one and done, so I, I think you have to go through and she's gotta see what's in there.
Do you have another copy of that?
Yeah.
Hey, do you have another copy of that? I can pass this way. He's holding onto it.
Before they issue a...
I'll get it back to you, I just wanna let these guys look at it. Denise?
You wouldn't be the representative, would, are you looking for like one of the selectmen to be representative?
No, I, the way I look at it is I don't own the property, so I shouldn't be the representative of the property, 'cause even though the range is there, I'm not...
So the representative is just a contact person of one of these...
It's funny. It doesn't even require...
Let's get it done.
As you see the frustration with this, is the...
When there's a trespass, you're gonna get caught.
Whatever.
The bottom line to this is that...
As long as no one shows up at my house.
In, in one sentence, we get tell, people tell, we don't have to be permitted or we may not be permitted, we don't have to, so...
Okay.
I, I have been going...
Yeah, it's a circle.
A huge circle.
Okay, hold on. I, I, I'm with you. What I wanna do is I wanna turn around and I wanna ask the board, the papers, the paperwork that was presented to us from, um, Officer Ed, I'll call him Officer Ed. We're gonna get it filled out, get it submitted, based on everything goes well with it, we can try and get, reconvene on this, based on everything will be okay, if you guys decide it'll be okay, based on this paperwork.
So you, you were told that just submit this paperwork and then you'll be good to go?
Yeah, I don't need to, well, I'd be good to go, I told them I'd even run it down there.
Yeah.
And do the face-to-face to make sure that everything goes smooth, that if there's any questions with the paperwork, I can get them answered.
So what I want to do, I want to stop the runaround, and I want to nail it down to getting this paperwork filled out tonight. As long as this board is good with what we've talked about, I know Bill's the new select person here. He may want to ask a few more questions or whatever, but I know I've been heard, I've heard this a few times. I think Ed and Dan and Mike have heard it. I'm good with it. I'm just saying, I'm good with it.
How about we do it a different way?
I don't question whether or not, you know, Mass Division of Fisheries and Wildlife has some jurisdiction over that. I mean, there are, I don't know if they're in danger, but there's threatened species over there. So I mean, it is what it is. I mean, it's turtle habitat, so I think we have to work with that agency. I don't, I don't know if anyone questions whether or not they have jurisdiction to review this. So I think we have to play ball with them, give them...
With this?
Yeah, and give them the site and what the plan is. I was there...
Whatever they're asking for, I will give them.
I, I was there, and what I took away from that was that it's a small location. It's contained as long as we review everything. It should be okay.
I can tell you this.
But no one's going to sign off on that until they see everything.
I can tell you this. I was just involved in a bid down on 97 behind, behind, behind Pub 97. They spent $23,000 to take the trees, take all the trees down and put the stumps around the 10,000 square foot parcel of land, and they put dirt mounds. They put dirt mounds. They took mounded dirt all over the property. And the reason they did it was for the turtles to go into those mounds. And Mike, you probably know what I'm talking about. So this would be perfect for turtles to nest in. That's how I feel about it.
Mr. Chairman, how about, how about approval continuing upon the acceptance of that paperwork?
That's what I want to do, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, we approve this, the gun range with the, help me word that.
Proval of Mass Fisheries.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, as long as this paperwork goes where it needs to go, and it's, it's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So whenever this paperwork gets filled out, it's taken care of the way it needs to be filled out. They've accepted this paperwork. As we see it, we're good to go.
And we get something written, a written approval on that back?
Yeah, they'll be issuing...
And how long does it generally take?
Well, it could take 30 days or less. Just depends how picky they are.
I think he needs this back. Mike?
Did you have something else for...
I, I told her that once I, once I bought...
Put me down for the contact.
This, this down here, I have everything else. I told her that I basically am driving down there.
Where does it have to go?
Oh, it's got to go to, it's something local. I don't...
Okay, hold up one second. Who are we going to get to fill out the paperwork?
I, it's just looking for town information and mailing addresses. There's not, there's no representative required.
Okay.
The property owner is the town of Groveland.
Someone between you and Cassandra will get it taken care of.
I can do it tonight. It's only looking for a name and address. That's all that it's looking for, is a name and address.
We got a motion on the floor.
Yes.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
I would just like, Mr. Dempsey, can I get a copy of that letter you referred to just a while ago, if you wouldn't mind? You can email it to us. Scan, it doesn't matter. Or if you have extra copies, that's even better. Look at this.
Ed, could you...
Thank you, sir.
Ed, could you keep us posted when you get that paperwork back in your hand? You're going to hand deliver it?
Yeah, I told her that I would drive it down to Westboro with what she required, so there's no second, there's no questions. I can deal with it. I can get it done. Because she understood the urgency of this.
Okay, just let us know when you, when you've delivered it to them, and whatever else you need.
That's what he has to give, is a map. So Ed, the only thing you need to do, right, is the Google map and just identify where the location is. That's the only thing that's missing.
It's already done.
Okay.
And, and the reason why I don't, because it has to have the signature of the property owner on that, so I don't know who signs it for the town.
Chairman.
Ed, when you do the Google map, be specific to show, don't just send off a Google map of a whole piece of land. Show where it's going to be, showing how small it's going to be.
She already told me the size she needs and everything else like that. I already did it.
Right, right, because I, if you send this big thing out, they're going to go, oh, wow, it's a whole turtle thing. You know what I mean?
No, she already told me the size.
If you show the little picture, okay, good. It's very small, so it's not like it's taking up a lot of that land. You know what I'm saying? Okay. All right, so we got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded, and no other discussion? All in favor? Okay, all set.
So just for clarity, would we need to come back before you again, or once we have the permit, and the board's okay with that?
We've already made, we've already made, we've voted...
It's contingent upon getting the permit?
Right. Well, it's not, is it actually a permit?
Or the paperwork being...
Paperwork. The way to get money.
The way to get money.
Okay.
Actually...
I think, I think at that point, we're good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It looks like it's a simple review based on the size of the property, and it says a response within 60 days. So I don't know what they'll issue, other than maybe a letter or a permit.
Okay. All right, they're all set. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. Very good job.
Okay, thanks for coming in. Okay, so, we're early still. Denise, can we do the harbor master update, or you want to wait? I mean...
Whatever I want to do.
Because it's not, it's not quite 7:50 for the...
Sure.
Okay, so we're going to move to the harbor master update. So we had a gentleman, when you were on vacation, that had come in, asked about the harbor master, what's going on down there. I was under the assumption, it's probably my fault, but I was under the assumption that I know the harbor master is, has told me he'll handle the waterways. He's not going to handle anything to do with the land, wants nothing to do with the land. And I had had a few conversations to try and find out what's going to happen with a harbor master, a dock master, whatever we happen to call it, we're going to talk about over the winter. And then, I think the last time we talked, we said we're going to wait till the appointments come July.
No, so I've had it posted for a couple of weeks now for the dock master position. We've had two people express interest, and after talking to both people that are interested, they'd actually like to both be appointed and share, it's a volunteer position, so they'd like to share that role, so that there's two people that have contact information, two people that have keys to the shed, that people can call one or the, one or the other if there's a problem down there. So I told them both that I would talk to the board tonight and see if that's something you're, you would support. It would be a police chief recommendation, so if you support it, I'll forward both names to him, and he can speak to them both and then forward their names back for reappointment, or for appointment.
So the, so the police chief is going to handle them? And I think sometimes when you put two people in charge of the same position, you may have backlash. So maybe, it's up to the board, maybe make one a dock master and one assistant dock master or something?
Well, I think their concern was they both, you know, they're comparing it to the way the Callahans maintain the boat ramp. The Callahans were there every day. They cannot be. So they said, you know, one of them said he's there every weekend. One of them said he usually goes down during the week. So for instance, last week, the shed was left open, wide open. Someone had a key to it and left it open. Saturday, someone cut the lock off of our, cut the chain off of our brand-new lock.
It was a maroon truck. I can tell you all about it.
And we weren't informed of those things until someone went down there later and found it. So the thought was, if you have two of them, there's not really anything to be sort of a point person, other than if there's repairs that are needed, someone needs to call and tell us. If the floats need to go in, someone needs to tell us.
Right. And the only reason I say that is I've been down there myself, and I've been standing in the dark, and I've had people, because I'm a select person, bitching at me, saying, you know, this boat, it shouldn't be here. That boat shouldn't be here, and what have you. They want someone to talk to. And I think it, it gets more than, and the Callahans were there, they, they answered all those questions. They were there all the time. So I agree with what you're saying. You need a point portion, but I also think you need to have someone that's more in charge. I would say, maybe I'm wrong, but more...
Between the two of them, how many days do you think that they've covered down there?
Well, I think it's a matter of they both moor their boat here, they both use the ramp, so they'd be going down there. You know, I think they each said at least once a week they're down there. So if they're there on different days, at least we had, you know, different times covered that... But they both have said, you know, my contact information can be given out. We'll maintain the list of moorings. We'll go after the people that haven't paid. I mean, those kinds of things.
Are they going to, that's what I was going to ask. Are they going to handle the moorings? They going to handle getting the names of the people to you for the moorings and what have you?
Well, people come to us, and we have them on a waiting list, but I don't know what's available until we have someone actually doing this job.
Right, but they'll handle all that?
Yes.
Okay. So do we need to give them a job description or anything?
There is one. That's what's been posted.
Okay.
So like I said, they both expressed interest, and they both felt that it was too much for one person for them to do, given their other commitments. So if it was something that they could job-share, they thought was...
Was it like a co-dock master or co-harbor master?
Yeah, I mean, again, it's just a volunteer position, so they could both be dock masters.
And then the other thing we're going to have is we're going to have construction going on down there. How does that play in with the construction and what goes on down there? I don't want to have any more problems that we already got going on here in the town.
The construction won't be until the boating season's over.
Okay.
November 1st. So they, they can't do anything until the floats come out of the water anyways.
Yeah, last week, but someone came in and they were complaining about the concrete that was stored down there and what have you. So even though it's going to be in November, maybe they're going to stop bringing stuff in prior to... Will they be, will that person be able to talk to them, work out, work out the details with the person running the construction, whatever's going on down there?
All the materials should be on site now.
Okay.
There shouldn't be anything else brought there, because it's all the concrete planks that are being put down.
Okay. Does anyone have any other input on this?
I, I just think that should be coverage on the weekend, so. Do you say they get out there one day a week?
Yes, so one of the gentlemen says he...
They should be there Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah. One of them said he's there every weekend, and he has been in the past working and doing some things around there to fix up the dock and to help out.
Any, any other selectmen have anything they want to say? Great, go ahead.
Derek Bynning, Berrywood Lane. I was the one that spoke at the last meeting about the lack of progress on the boat ramp. And Denise, I know you weren't here, but we couldn't get any answers. This, the boat ramp was supposed to be completed this winter. We had a special town meeting to gain extra funds from CPA to complete the rest of the Pines project, so that the road commissioner could use the remaining $125,000 to complete the boat ramp. Those planks were to be ordered ASAP.
Can I just say something? I'm not trying to be a jerk when I say this. The topic is a harbor master update, so stick to the harbor master. We can't talk, we can't go off topic. It's...
Well, I want to know about the, the, those planks that are sitting there. I, I just want to know why they, when they were ordered.
Yes, so they were ordered right away.
In September?
No, special town meeting wasn't in September. So the special town meeting was in October. We had to advertise it. We posted it. We awarded a contract. The planks were ordered. The problem is, is the Army Corps of Engineer required a specific stainless steel rod to be in the cement planks, and that's what the company making them had trouble acquiring. So they were waiting on those cement rods.
Well, the special town meeting wasn't for the remaining funds to complete the boat ramp. That money was already available.
No, they, they approved $143,000 for the boat ramp at the special town meeting.
Okay, so at that meeting back in August, there was no money left in the Pines?
There was no meeting in August.
In September, when I spoke.
The special town meeting in October?
No, at the selectmen's meeting.
Okay. Well, there's $35,000 in the Pines revolving account. So we went to special town meeting looking for money to complete the boat ramp, and that was $143,000 that Community Preservation authorized, and that's what town meetings supported.
Was it to complete the boat ramp, or was it to complete the ball fields?
No, it was both. It was a combined project.
There was additional funds within the Pines fund. We went for additional funds through the Conservation, Preservation Act funds, so that that could pay for the capital outlay on that, so that we could preserve, what was it, a little over $200,000 for future maintenance, with an estimate that low, you know, $20,000,000 a year to maintain the facilities down there, so we wouldn't have a budgetary problem going forward. So money could have been used out of the Pines fund, would have drained it, and then we would have had a maintenance issue. So you can, you can't use CPA funds for annual maintenance, like cutting grass and that sort of thing. So we went to town, the special town meeting, structured it a different way, used the available CPA funds to complete projects, and there's still money left in the Pines account. So I, I thought that that was a smart way of handling it. Otherwise, you, you, you build it, and we're back to arguing all about who's got a bay date and where we're getting the money, and that's a, that's a, that's a struggle here sitting in this chair to try to get the annual maintenance.
The question I think he's asking is the money that was appropriated to build the ramp?
Well, it...
Well, didn't we run out of money?
No, it, what, in last September, a gentleman stood up at the selectmen's meeting and said, let's forget about the boat ramp. Let's use that remaining money to complete the ball fields. And the road commissioner stood up, and he said, I need that money because I have to order the plank, so the boat ramp can be completed this winter because of the migrating sturgeon. And it wasn't done this winter. He put the order in late. I mean, if the, from what I understood from that selectmen's meeting, the money was there.
But then the board decided against using that money. So what Dan was just alluding to is the board decided, instead of taking the remaining money in the Pines account, they wanted to go to a special town meeting and have Community Preservation put money up, which is what they did with the joint project to finish the ball fields.
Cover the board, to cover the remaining funds.
Because they did not want to drain that Pines account, because then there would be nothing to use for maintenance. It's in that account for the boat ramp, and then there's money in there for the ball fields, and then there's...
Carpet planks, sits on the ground, waiting for the project to go...
It's a, it's a giant storage area right now, which is...
The money is, the money's there. The project can't be done because we, time went by again.
Yeah. Administratively, someone missed the boat and didn't order the, the stuff on time.
I can show you the contract. The planks were ordered right after town meeting. We had to advertise it. It was all advertised right away. It was the, it was the steel rods that were delayed.
If, if the, if the equipment could not have been delivered on time, you know, it's the Pines recreation area. I can't believe that we're storing 105 concrete planks for another year.
Well, I can say this, and again, the storage of those planks has nothing to do with this board. It has to do with our road commissioner. Our road commissioner is an elected official and has say only to you people, not to this board. We cannot talk, we, he's an elected official. The town people are to answer him. We can't, we can't get, we don't get, not that we can't, we don't get involved. We really can't. I mean, you people, the town people, are the people that need to tell him how to do his job. If it was an appointed job, we could do it. We can't do it. He's not appointed. He's an elected...
But it, but it...
Maybe he would have come to us and said, we're going to store them down there for a year. I knew nothing about it. I don't know if anyone here knew anything about it. I didn't know nothing about it.
In your opinion, should they be moved? Are they in the way? I mean, what's the practical? Very dangerous.
Yeah, I don't know about town council and all that, but...
You can't change the past, and if the sturgeon are running, I mean, there's environmental law. So if we can't put them in now, we can't put them in now. So I don't know anything about that, but...
Well...
But I'm listening.
Yeah.
So what do we do now? What do you want done? You want them moved?
Well, you got to, you got to, if you go down there and look at it...
You want them moved? They should be fenced off, because the kids are playing on them.
What's the upshot? What can we do?
They're going to get hurt. I mean, I can't change what happened last year.
Dan, Dan, I'm, I'm, listen, we all can sit here right now, and we can tell them to put construction fence around that tomorrow morning. We can tell him. Let, let me just say something.
But Bill...
But, hold on for a minute. And he may just say, the road commissioner's saying, no, I'm not putting construction fence around that.
But, but, Bill, we don't have to tell him. Talk to him about it, see if we can do something about moving it.
It, I don't know if, if moving it's the issue, but as a, as an individual road commissioner on the town payroll, someone that would order $100,000 in material knowing that they'd be sitting there for eight months, what was the rush then, if he knew he couldn't get them in time? It's a recreation area, and now you got stuff sitting around for another year.
So like the answer, the short and the long of it is, someone in the background yelled, it's not, it's unsafe. So do you want construction fence around it? We can ask him. We can't tell him?
Well, there's...
Do you want them moved? We can ask him. We can't tell him? I mean, I, I agree with you.
From a legal, from a legal point, and, and working in public safety myself, whenever you get tripping falls and...
I understand.
And you, you'd go down there, and you've got flat, one-inch flat stock steel sticking out that's razor sharp, going right down the road going in, and kids are playing on them. Well, you got to do something to make them safer. This is from just a legal... It was a bad decision to order them and not knowing that they couldn't be in in the allotted time. It's not a storage facility. It's a, it's a recreational area.
Right. And what we need to do now is we need to make it safe, or we got, like you say, or Dan says, we got to move them.
Yeah.
We either move them or fence them in. And we can't, we can't tell him. We can ask him. You guys can tell him. So if someone here in the audience wants to say...
Well, how do you tell them? There's no one here tonight to talk to.
I did.
So we have to ask him to be in the meeting?
What's that?
How do we get him here?
My experience is his answer will be, I answer to the voters every two years.
Okay, well, let's just...
That's all I have to say, but, I mean...
I'm not trying to, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to work with you, but you got to understand my frustration. You know what I mean? I have frustration as much as you do, and my frustration is that probably a year ago, I wanted to try and make this position a point, but back then, and no one wanted to do it, whatever. But the point I'm trying to make is, we can't tell him to do anything. We can ask him, and we will ask him. Whatever you ask us to tell him, we will ask him, and you know, maybe the town people get together and...
I'm basically asking the same questions I asked two weeks ago, and because there's no representation, and I'm not getting any answers.
Right.
You know, last week, everybody looked at me with a thousand-yard stare with no answers, because...
We didn't have them.
Yeah, and the, the only person that can, that can supply the answers isn't present.
Do you want to read that letter that he sent us? Someone want to read it? Because it sounds like we're going to end up going this whole route all night, so...
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's just, I'll come back to the letter in a minute. Let's go to the, finish up on this harbor master thing. So does the board want to turn around and, and, and...
Yeah, we're going to, we'll do two, co-doc masters, harbor master on the recommendation of the police chief, the dock master on the recommendation of the police chief.
Okay.
When, when we did bring that up at the next meeting?
Yeah, well, I haven't even forwarded the names to the chief, because I wanted to make sure this board was okay with having two people serve in that capacity. So I'll send them to the chief tomorrow, and I'm sure by the next meeting, we can have him back on for appointment.
Okay, good. So we don't need to make a vote on that. We'll just...
No, as long as you guys support the two, having co-doc masters, then I'll forward.
All right, so we're good.
The more, the more, the more, the better, you get better coverage.
Okay, so now it's close enough to time. We have the discussion on the Pines recreation area and the boat ramp and grass cutting, but-
We'll act there, okay.
Oh, they're, we'll act there, so what I want to do-
Continue the conversation we just had.
Right, well, I, let me just, I'm gonna, I'm not a good reader aloud, just so that everyone understands what's going on. I did ask the road commissioner to be here. I did ask for a response from him, and this is the response. So if you want to read that aloud so everyone understands. Dear Selectmen, May 31st, 2016. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend tonight's 5:31 2016 meeting, which I noticed a discussion on the Pines and mowing. I will be able to attend a meeting on or after the second week in July. I remind you that any part, party tonight that is discrediting or discussing me or the Highway Department with insinuations and allegations should be shut down immediately. Me and a representative from the Highway Department and Teamsters Local 170 will have to be present to answer any questions or allegations from you and the special interest groups. Also, at the July meeting, we should discuss implementing user fees from all recreation departments to cover the cost of the Highway Department mowing of the fields. Changing my position from elected to appointed. This would avoid special interest groups from a hostile takeover of the highway that almost happened. I serve all the taxpayers and residents of Roland, not just special interest groups. Thank you, Robert Arakalia, road commissioner. Can you move this down? That's one for you. So I'm going to ask, I know you're going to speak. I'm going to ask specifically to not use names. Call him road commissioner or whatever, no names, no highway people's names, because for litigation reasons, that's what we need to do.
That's fine.
Okay, thanks.
Bill?
Okay, go ahead.
Highway commissioner's not a union guy, I mean, he's-
I understand he's not union, but his help is. And if, if someone talked about his help-
No, I understand that, we shouldn't be talking about any employees, but-
Right, I agree.
He is an elected official. Way in the public, you talk about whether or not he's doing something or not.
Yeah.
And all I'm saying is, I agree with you 100%. I'm just protecting the people talking by saying, no name, no names of highway people or whatever, no names. That's, that's just, you know, to protect them. You can't say his name. Go ahead.
Bill Daly, Seven Hemlock Lane. Just to recap, there's been a lot of misconceptions on some of the projects around town, a lot of clouded versions of where things actually are. So I put together a folder for 20 years showing the end of the fiscal year or the end of last year, what was spent down the Pines. I think it was 691,000, what plus what was ever spent over the last four or five months. As I said before, you know, you have to add the payrolls into that. It was stated that there was 300,000 spent from 2014 and 15. That number's actually over 500,000, as you can see in that ledger. And back to the original agreement, which is two copies, one from 2009 between the contractor who removed all the, the sand, and when it was redone again in 2012. We won't, I don't have to get into all the details, but it shows what the contractor was, was responsible for. Grading, spreading loom, hydro seed, dust control, tree clearing, just about everything. All the loom to stay on site, $100,000 bonds for the duration of the project, it's all in here. We won't take up the whole night. I've asked for more from, from Town Hall under item number five, A through P. I've asked for those, those documents, I, I've not yet received those, but I can keep getting them. So the, the other thing is, so Civil Design Group, the engineer for the, who designed the Pines, we paid them $25,000. GZA, who designed the boat ramp, we paid them $56,000. So a little different, I know there's some Army Corps stuff and, and Marine design stuff, so maybe that is more money. But when these things aren't built to those designs, what do you do now? You know, and I, I'm sure there's copies of the plans I gave, it's like McDonald's, the copy of the Pines plan. You can see it's not built per the plan. So at that point, did you waste the money with, with the engineering designing it? Because now you can't, you just can't keep winging it. You need, you need a plan. So, you know, so out of that, that's, that's what, $81,000 in design, and the same for the boat ramp. I have the bids, the two bids in, in that folder also that show the difference in the pricing of the boat ramp. And we have to keep in mind, the Highway Department's bid does not include payable, does not include the payable for that project. And some of the items that are already completed are not completed per plan. So again, when you're not building it to the design, you know, and you're paying for the design, it's not apples for apples. So, but back to the, the Pines layout, it's completely, not, not completely wrong, but there's some key items that are missing. Parking, parking lots, walkways, traffic islands to protect pot cars, to protect children, to add landscape trees, buffers, to make grade changes. It's, it's all in the plan, I'm sure you guys have it. And on that ledger, you know, there's a lot of subs on that ledger, it was just, I, I don't even know what some of the stuff is. I, I'm still trying to find out one of them, JAF Industries. I don't, I don't know what they are, $40,000 or $40,000, I don't know. I can't find out for what, but there's a lot of stuff highlighted, circled on there that, that I don't think, I'd like to see the backup part, actually. The, and all, all the subs on those ledgers too, did they have the proper insurances? Did they have the proper bonds? Are there certified payrolls with all this stuff? There's, the list goes on and on. Give me a second. The bathrooms, bathrooms, I think I was told that those will be completed shortly. The monies, it's in the folder to complete them, I don't think that's realistic. I said that before, I still believe it's not realistic, that needs to be looked at further. There's also in there is the minutes from a meeting back in 2012, I believe, where it states that the Highway Department requested, on the Pines Recreation Committee minutes, July 16, 2012. Road Commissioner spoke to the need for another water cannon at the dig site, as it's very dry and getting more blowing of sand than usual. The cannons are needed to put water on a large field that's being developed by the contractor, which has already been planted. Research the price and recommends that we okay $5,500. Now, the contractor is absolutely responsible for dust control, it's in the agreement. We even paid for the water that the, that the contractor used, and we even paid for the meter that the contractor used. But then it goes on to say, motion, the person recommended, and it said that the road commissioner spoke to the person for a large lawnmower for use at the Pines only. With all the new fields and with the size of the large field in particular, it would be very labor intensive to mow the grass with the equipment. And that was approved. Now, that's fine. You don't want to mow? That's fine. I, I don't have a problem with that. I'll tell you how it works in the real world. We get someone else to mow, and we back charge your approved budget for it, and that's it. And if we hired anyone to mow, I, I, I motion that they get laid off. I mean, that's, that's how it works in the real world. You know, this isn't, this isn't high school, schoolgirl antics, you know, this, that's how it works. I mean, that's fine. You don't want to mow? We'll mow, and we'll back charge your budget that was approved at town meeting. That included mowing. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that, that was approved. And I, I just, it, it's frustrating because nothing gets finished. You know, the bag no school, those brought the cans. I, 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 I threw in a couple copies of the plan that was supposed to be, that parking lot that was supposed to be for snow storage. That's, you can see, it's a 48-spot parking spot, there was even changes made to it by the Highway Department to move the road and the parking over. I mean, all, and we, I was told that they saved 200, no, $300,000 there. It was a $108,000 site package. I'd love to install that business plan into my business. So I don't, I don't even know how it's doable, it's just, it's all, it, it, it's all clouded conversations, and these are the facts. They're all in those folders, and it took me a long time to get them, but it's out there, and I'd love to get the stuff that I requested, but I just can't. So with that being said, I think you guys need to look at that, and I, I think you need to look at it long and hard and decide what you want to do, because it's-
Go ahead.
Next question.
Yes. Yep.
You're in, you're in the construction trade?
I am.
You've read this contract?
I have.
Because I, I look at the ledger here and I see a lot of big checks here for excavation work.
Yep.
Does this, does this contract, it was the removal of sand out of there. Were they supposed to excavate it as part of that?
I don't know if the excavation work that was paid by the town was for utilities, or I, I don't know.
Because I can't see in this contract what else was needed down there. If I read this and something-
The water, saw, and electric, I would assume.
They pulled the sand out of there, and they were supposed to leave it in a certain condition.
They're supposed to leave it to a certain grade and, and not to place the loom until the approval was done by the engineer. And then it would spread the loom and, and the hydro seed, and stabilize, keep it stabilized. You have bankings eroding over there, I mean, it's, it's pitiful.
One thing I had asked for, I had asked Denise, I don't know if you have, whether, I mean, East Coast excavation here, right? It's 77,306, so I put out for public bid.
I'm still waiting on some of the answers. I have your five highest vendors, but I'm still waiting on documentation on the bids. Not that I know of, but-
I don't, I don't know, I don't, really, I don't-
Not that I know of, but I don't know.
Well-
It didn't come through me.
It didn't, it might have preceded you, right? I mean, some of these are dated-
I don't think so.
Well, the-
Uh, the earliest ones, actually, the earliest ones, December 14, 2014, two years ago. East Coast excavation.
Yeah, I, I did not put it out to bid, no.
Looks like they started in December.
Can I ask you a question before we start? Dan, hold on for a second. Can I ask, can I ask a question before?
I didn't hear any questions.
I know, I'm, I'm not going to shut you down, I'm just going to ask Denise a question.
Why did we spend this kind of money and were state laws applied with it? I think we should only answer that.
So any work that goes on in the town of Roland, am I correct when I say this, $10,000 in, under, does not need to go to bid?
Depends what it is.
Okay. So let's, let's clarify it so that we can get the-
So it doesn't need to go to bid, but you still need to do contracts, you still need to get, some need written responses, some need sealed bids. It really depends what chapter and verse of the law falls under.
Okay.
And, uh, another thing, back to the boat ramp, is the town even insured for that?
Hold on, let me just finish where I'm going.
But it should be the aggregate, it can't be a share reason. I mean, one of these checks is over $11,000, but I mean, it can't be, I mean, it has to be the, the total job cost.
In a year, yes.
You absolutely cannot get a price from a contractor for one hour and give him 10,000 hours of work. Absolutely not. And we can get the Attorney General here to, to educate everyone on that.
Let me just finish what I was, hold on. So what I'm trying to say to you is, there's some misconceptions that people in the town think that you can hire someone, and I'm probably one of them, that $10,000 unless you have to get three competitive bids.
What do you mean more?
They don't have to pay prevailing wage because it's under $10,000.
Not under construction, it's prevailing wage on dollar one and up.
What's that?
If it's construction, prevailing wage applies to dollar one and up. Doesn't matter what cost it is.
Anything that went on over there prior to you, after you, we should, we should be getting bids.
Depends, depends on the cost, yes.
So it sounds like a dollar or more, we should be getting bids. Am I correct when I say that?
No, prevailing wage is different from bids.
What point in time do we need to get bids? That's all I'm asking. I'm trying to stop this, what we've got going on every day.
Every point, every point, in my opinion.
It's just getting ridiculous.
If it's going to be more than $10,000 in aggregate, so if-
For $10,000 and more, we need to get bids.
Right, if I'm hiring you-
And that we don't.
If I'm hiring, but if I'm hiring you today to do a project for us at the Pines, and then next week another project comes up and I call you and your first one is $7,000 and your second one is $5,000, that should have gone out to bid because in aggregate it's $12,000 all paid to you.
Right. So anyone that went down there and changed the light bulb for $5, we don't have to do anything, we're okay. Because their aggregate's $5. But yet, if we go down there and we do some kind of, whatever it might be, fix the bathrooms, and the aggregate is $10,000 or more, we should have had that out to bid.
Correct.
Okay. That's where we need to probably start today.
The bonus to that is you, you'll have a, a payment and performance bond for that work if it's not completed by the contractor. Because right now where we stand, it's, everything's in limbo, no one knows anything.
Right.
But back to the mowing though, let's, let's wrap this up with the mowing.
I don't want to keep flying around here because this has been going on and on, and I'll tell you something right now, I'm sick of it, I'm sure you're sick of it, I'm sure everyone here is sick of it.
Well, go through the stuff, you five, go through the stuff and-
I understand. I want to get this thing nailed down tonight, okay? The people down there have a mission, they want something done, right? They want something done. They want something for their money. Can we go back and get their money? We can't go back and get their money, unfortunately, we can't. But moving forward, we should be able to put the right things in place where this doesn't happen again. Am I wrong when I say that? Go ahead.
We, we, I think we owe answers to people like Bill that I want to know myself what transpired down there.
Maybe we should get a-
I'm not going to get all the answers.
Bill, if everything was done properly, there should be records. I've asked for records, I asked for if there were bids on it.
Okay.
So I think we need to follow up and see if there were bids. If the law required bids and they weren't, then we need to go to the next step.
Okay.
If the bids were there and then it was closed.
Is that, is that the consent of what the board wants to do? That's what the consent of the board wants to do? But what I'm saying-
I, I want it regardless of the board.
Right, okay, I agree with you.
I want to know.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying, we need to leave here tonight and move forward with this thing, and let's get moving with it, and let's stop the, the, people coming in and upset and people not getting the answers. I want to move forward with it. I'm sick and tired of it, I'm sick and tired of this whole thing. I'm ready to just say, Mike, be the chairman, I'm done. I really am. I'm done with it.
My suggestion is this, and Denise is working on it.
And you're subject to aggravating, you know yourself, you don't get the answers that you want.
I get frustrated.
I get frustrated, you get, everyone gets frustrated. Let's get to the answers, let's just get this done and over with tonight. I'm sick and tired of it. I'm sick and tired of the phone calls, I'm sick and tired of everything.
I had asked you previously, and you were on vacation, so I'm not pressuring you. I mean, it's been a few years, what's, what's another couple weeks, right?
Let's wrap up, two easy ones.
So I asked for the top five contractors there, the bids, I want to see what happened on the top five. Who were the vendors, what were the dollar amounts in the aggregate? And, and, and I did that, it's kind of like a materiality audit test there. So I want to look at that and see if the top five vendors down there were bid out as they should have been. And if they were, then we settle it. But I, I, I hear a lot of things and conjecture, and, and we got to get the facts. I mean, you just can't speculate. I don't like conjecture, the only way to do it is the proof's in the book. We got to see if the, if it was done properly, and do we have the backup for it?
When was the contractor's, when did it work for us?
Can, can I just respond to Dan's, so-
Bill, we have the ledger here with all the vendors.
It's all there.
Okay, I'm just asking a question.
It's, it's all right here, right?
So when was the, when was the contractor working for us? When was the check written? I, I'm, I'm not looking, you're looking at it.
I have a series of checks for excavators here that date from our same company, from December 18 to 14, up until July 30 to 50, and they told $77,860.
So we should know.
I mean, if, if, if we had a contract where the town was being paid per unit of sand, right, with a yacht, kind of-
$265, I think it was.
That was a different contractor.
Right? Well, I'd like to know, what was the excavation work for $78,000 down there? Was it times work for the electrical line? Seems like a lot of excavation work for $78,000. I mean, what do they get? Couple thousand dollars a day for a big machine, on rate?
Yeah, 12, 1500 for a decent sized machine. I never saw, I've never saw a decent sized machine down there.
But there's multiple issues, Bill.
I understand that. I'm, listen, I'm only trying to resolve them, but I'm, I'm trying to take the best route we can, okay?
It's accountability. It's accountability, there was a committee for the Pines and it was disbanded for whatever reason, it predates me. So, this thing kinda floated, people wanna know what's going on, when the projects are gonna be completed, everything from the boat ramp and everything else, and I don't think we have a handle on what went down there.
So, moving forward, moving forward, Dan, who, who's gonna get the answers? Who is going to get the answers?
Denise is gonna help us with the paperwork, right?
So, can I just answer Dan's question? So with the exception of GZA, which I came into.
Don't buy me news, Denise.
No, no, I'm just, but I just wanna say, that's the only one that I know has a contract, cause I personally wrote one in two thousand and fourteen for GZA. Anything else I don't have in my possession, which is what I'm trying to gather. So, GZA, we went out to bid, cause the engineering, that's the engineering firm.
And what's procurement office, right? So if you don't have it, it's an assumption to say that doesn't exist?
No, cause other departments have gone out to bid and have solicited quotes, so.
Cause we gotta ask the highway department if they put those jobs off again.
Yes, and that's what I'm waiting on.
Engineering doesn't need to go to bid, but, but just for the record, GZA, GZA put out three sheets, one being a cover sheet for fifty-six thousand dollars, so.
Can I, Dan, I'm not trying to frustrate you.
No, I'm not frustrated, I'm not frustrated, I'm calling the clan tonight, Bill.
I know, watch me, ready, ready?
You seem frustrated.
You just said, the conversation just went that Denise said basically that.
She doesn't have it.
Doesn't have it.
So someone else does.
And, and it's gonna fall back on to the road commission that probably has it, and why are we not gonna get the information, I would gather?
What are we gonna do? The Board of Selectmen's gonna file Freedom of Information Act and get it?
This is where we keep hitting up roadblocks, we keep hitting these roadblocks.
Let's wrap up two things, simple.
Yeah, the, the public has a right to know what went on, okay?
The public does, and the public needs to ask that question.
So, if you don't get a response under the Freedom of Information Act, I mean, what are you gonna do? You gonna get legal counsel involved in it, and what are we gonna do?
All right.
I don't, I don't wanna speculate on that, but I think we asked nicely, formally, can we get the public bids on these excavation jobs?
Let's come up with a list of what you want, the questions you wanna ask.
Well, I have the five that Dan was inquiring about.
There's this industries company here, twenty-nine thousand dollars, there's, uh, boat ramp services, was that engineer and fifty-five thousand dollars? You got a sprinkle service that was another one.
Ben Avento, fifty.
You got this tree service for forty-seven thousand dollars. What else is there? Forty-seven thousand dollars for the lawnmower, I don't know if the state did this, I don't know how that works, but where's the lawnmower? There's no grass down there, is there? So, you know, I'm asking questions, um, we're all public servants, uh, it's the taxpayers that paid for this, uh, I think they have a right to know, and, uh, I'm asking questions at this point, so. I, I think we can send a list, Denise doesn't have the answer, we ask the highway commissioner and find out, I, I think he will answer.
So.
Okay, with your last two points.
Okay, well, just, um, so the mow, back in those minutes, right, for the pine juice only, so let's just move that back to the Pines, right? And, if it's in a budget to mow, and you're not mowing fields, then we're just gonna, I'm gonna set up mowing, and we're gonna backcharge that budget, right? And we're gonna lay someone off?
All right, let me.
The guy that's supposed to be mowing?
Backcharging the budget, we need to find out that.
Well, I get, just like if you don't perform in the real world, this isn't Fantasy Island anymore, it's the real world.
You give it back.
If you don't perform, so, someone else does what you're supposed to do and you don't get paid for that.
Okay, let me, hold your thought. As far as the mowing goes, am I correct when I say this, I know, Bill, you weren't here, but didn't we appoint another guy on the highway? He needed another person to mow, and we appointed another person to mow.
He had asked for two people, I don't really, you gave him one.
Right, so now if the property's not gonna get mowed.
I thought it was to help out with the additional mowing.
Mowing, because they were, they had two part timers, they were gonna get rid of the two part timers, and they were gonna get one guy for mowing. So now, if we're not gonna mow certain places, then maybe what we need to do is go back, I don't know what to say. You know something, I don't like the fact that things aren't getting mowed for whatever reason, I don't know the reasoning behind it, it's, I've heard rumors why it's happening, people ran for election, people got named, calling, whatever, but the point I'm trying to make is, me sitting here, I gave the highway a guy for mowing, if he's not gonna mow and they don't need him, then we don't.
Well, you control the budget, just wrap that up, that's simple stuff, there's not even, there's not enough for debate. And move the mower back down to the Pines, that's what it was approved for, by the town people, it was paid for out of the Pines money, that's it, that's a wrap, I mean, just wrap it up.
We control the budget, but it's gotta go back to town meeting for approval, I mean, we could move numbers all around on transfers, but we have to have special town meeting for that, so, I mean, we gotta have a special town meeting in July to move some grass cutting money.
And you don't have money to mow that, that property over there every week, you can't do it.
Not.
We don't have the money.
Not long term, no.
If you take the two hundred thousand dollars that we froze, and you start whittling away at that every week, we're not gonna have the money, and that place is not gonna be maintained. And that's the reason why I was big on freezing that money, so this is just absolutely.
Well, you gotta remember, we bought the mow about four years ago, bought the mow four years ago, grass still doesn't need to be cut on half those fields.
The point I'm trying to make is, the mowing was done up to a certain point and it stopped, okay? That's what's frustrating me, it stopped.
Well, you control that.
We can control it, but we, how do we control it?
You lay a guy off tomorrow morning, and you move the mower back to the Pines, that's it.
Okay.
I don't think we should be talking about layoffs. I'm sorry, Dan, say that again.
What are our options in terms of funding and appropriations to get the grass cut, if, you know, does it all have to be done through highway? Can it be done through cemetery? Can it be done through an outside contractor? What, what, what latitude do we have?
So it could be done through an outside contractor, which is what occurred last week, when I came back from vacation, um, I had some people come in Monday morning, I called the contractor, he went down. Penn Tucket had actually already shown up to cut it, um, he cleaned up after them.
And what fund does that come out of?
Um, it's gonna come out of the Pines account.
Okay, so.
Now, we're whittling away at the two hundred thousand dollars.
That money's already been allotted to someone's budget.
But, Bill, we, we got a memo from.
I'm, no, I, no, I understand, I, she called me, I said, it's okay, do it, I wanted it mowed, she called me, clarified that. That's not, it's a hundred, whatever it was, out of the two hundred, I don't have a problem with it.
Bill, I'm not, I'm not questioning that, but, but, Bob said he couldn't come in until later, right? Is what his memo said?
July.
July, so we can have the full discussion in July.
What happens if that doesn't happen in July?
And if we have a special town meeting, which we plan on right in the fall, we're gonna do like mid-year planning, is that kinda what we're gonna do?
Yeah.
Then we can transfer money back and forth, so if we find out it should've been paid out of one account, we'll put it back in the Pines.
So from now to.
That's what we gotta try to find out, right?
You couldn't put it in the Pines, cause that's a special revolving fund, but you could put it in another.
We could put it in another account.
Grass cutting account.
We're talking time.
Targeted to the grass cutting, with specific fields.
We're talking one field, we're talking the Pines, let's talk about Washington Park that's not getting mowed, where does that money come from? How do you pay for that? And you'll say, we can't get, we cannot get people in this town.
We already paid for that.
Hold on one second, we cannot get people in this town to volunteer, this is the reason why, this is the exact reason why, this is the reason why I don't wanna be here anymore, because this is absolute ludicrous. It's ludicrous what happens, okay? Every week we come in and we need new volunteers, we need this, and you know something, this is nothing but stalemate, it's ridiculous and it's stalemate. As far as I'm concerned, you know something, we try to do the right thing for this town and it never happens, never. I come in here, I want it, I put my heart and soul into this job, and you know something, when this keeps happening, I'm done, I've had it. It's, I'm, I'm sorry to say, this is absolutely kiddy stuff that does not need to happen. You guys can do what you want, I'm, you got one field, we can mow it, now we gotta talk about the Washington Park, where do we get the money to mow that?
I don't have.
Take it out of the budget, move it out of the budget.
Tell these guys, they, they coach, they take care of the kids, they get on there, they clean up, they do everything, and then they gotta go on Sunday and spend two hours mowing because someone's mad? This is ridiculous.
Why can't you take it out of the budget?
There's no budget down there, we don't have a budget here.
Oh, I, the.
They have to take out their, they have to take out their budget, the, the money they, they, they volunteers put in.
But the mowing for that park is, is, is in someone's budget, right?
Well, they were, they were sending the highway guys down there to mow it.
Is it in their budget to mow Washington Park? If it's in their budget, take the budget, take the money out of their budget. And where's the charter, where's the town charter?
It's under salary, if, if, it's under the salary, you can't charge expenses to salary without town meeting.
Then we lay a guy off and I get a landscape to stop mowing, I'm not, I'm not playing around.
We have to go to town meeting.
Then let's go. I mean, I, I, are you serious, you got, the five of you guys need to do something, I mean, you can control the purse strings.
I, I explained it earlier on, I'm gonna explain it one more time, we're up against a rock in a hard spot, it's an elected position, elected.
I understand the position, but the purse strings are not.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be right out in honest, the, the way that this could be handled, the people in the town need to go get a piece of paper and put thirty names on it and say what they wanna do.
I get thirty names, yeah.
That, that has to happen, that's what's gonna happen, okay? If it's not gonna be done, I don't see how we are gonna turn around here as a board and sit there and say, we, we can order someone to go mow when he's elected.
But you approved a, a, a new hire to mow lawns.
We did.
Lawns aren't being mowed, so, we all, we own him now too?
What's that latitude on that?
I mean, I don't wanna see anyone get laid off, but I mean, enough's enough.
I, I, I think we, right now, I mean, we're kinda stuck, we need a bad day to get us to July, we gotta get the road commissioner in here so we can.
Why do we have to wait till July? Why do we need to wait till July? If we had a problem in the fire department, the police department, any other department, it's not called for to wait till July, it's not, sorry, it's not, I'm sorry.
Bill, you wanna, you wanna have special town meeting next week, we can vote on, uh.
I'll, we'll do something, but it's not called for, it's not called for. If I had a problem with the police department, the fire department, any other department, I expect not to be told it's gonna be July, I'm sorry.
I know, you preach on the wire.
Hey, listen, I'm here for free, you guys are all here for free, a lot of people in this town get paid for their jobs, okay? Do I need the stress and aggravation? No, I don't, I don't.
No, I appreciate it, Bill, I appreciate what you do.
It's all pettiness, you know something?
We, we just, we just can't reach into that, uh, department, grab the money and reappropriate it without following procedure on it, I mean, it's just, it's just.
Well, what happens to the insubordination within that, within that department? I mean.
He's integral to you, the voters, that's, that's us the voters.
Are you telling me I need thirty signatures?
Whatever you're gonna do, I don't know how many signatures, but you can find out, I don't know, I'm just saying that we, it's frustrating because we can't, we cannot act on it. We can, we can lay someone off, but it's not gonna be.
To, just to wrap up then, well, let's get the, the mower back to the Pines, right, cause that's what it was bought for, that's the money it was purchased with, that's what it was bought for, that's what it was approved for, right? So we'll move that back to the Pines, and lock that up down there. I'll figure out Washington Park, that's no problem, the ledger and all the other stuff there, um, you guys have everything in there in the contract.
I'm gonna follow up.
What was old, I mean, tree clearing, dust control, stabilization, loom, excess loom, all that stuff, you know, it's, and it's serious, I mean, the, the five of you guys need to, need to look at that deep.
The biggest thing that I can say walking out of here tonight is, we should work tomorrow on making that position appointed, period. Make it appointed, now we have accountability, now we can say we want it mowed, it should be appointed, and the town people should go out and they should work, every one of you guys should go out there tomorrow and make this appointed. Now we'll have some say, and now we'll get it done the right way, okay? Now we're gonna be able to sit there and say, okay, guess what? The thing ain't going right down the Pines, we'll get in there, we'll take care of it, now we can, okay? They're not mowing the Washington Park, Shanahan Field, it's an appointed position, we will have say, until then.
Yeah, where do we stand with the Pines, can, in, in closing, can I get an update on the Pines? I mean, bathrooms, sprinklers, seed?
I did have a conversation with, let me think before I say it wrong, I had a conversation with, no, I went down there, I saw them spreading loom, I said to the, one of the workers, great job. I called the road commissioner, said thank you for getting down there, spreading the loom, that will be, it would be nice to see something done, and that was it, I did not get an update, I asked for an update, I didn't get one.
So, well, we're back to the mow, I mean, that's, that's.
So, the bathroom plumbing, um, I'm finalizing that to go out to bid, should be, I think advertised on June eighth. The well for the Pines is being advertised tomorrow, um, I haven't gotten any other plans from the Recreation Committee as far as the irrigation or the fields.
What's the estimate on the plumbing?
Um, the three quotes that we had were, the maximum was, uh, twenty-five thousand, I think it was eighteen thousand or twenty-five thousand, so.
And there's still gonna be a wooden roof and some windows and privacy screens going in on those?
Yes, yep, um, the hydroseeding is taking place, there's, hydroseeding taking place tomorrow down there, um, I think that's all I know of what's.
Can I ask you a question?
Let's really get the sprinklers in before we waste more money on hydroseed.
But I don't even know when those are gonna go, I don't have anything on those.
Denise, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, may I ask you this? You are our, working for the selectmen, okay? Cassandra works for the selectmen, do you work as the road commissioner's secretary as well?
Me?
Yeah.
No.
So why do you need to get in, why, why should you have to answer all these questions? That's my question, why should you have to answer them?
Well, but.
Not that I'm saying you should, shut us off, I know you're trying to help us.
But if I'm putting the bids out, I know the dates and stuff, so I can certainly answer them, cause I know when the bids are going out.
Okay, thank you, but the point I'm trying to make is, I ask questions, I don't get them, you know I ask the questions, I don't get them. Dan asks the questions, he doesn't get them, we need to get to a point where we can at least get our questions answered, simple as that. So, again, I'll go back to you guys and say, it's time to get the, the position appointed. Now, I don't know if that's gonna resolve the issues we're having because the person got elected for three years or whatever, but.
Are we still at six ninety-one at the Pines?
Uh, no, cause we've paid for, um, the toilets, uh, the porta potties are being paid for, the water, the utilities, all that comes out of that account.
That's, that's small, small numbers.
Yeah, we haven't done anything big, it's just all the, um.
What's it told now, do we know?
I, I don't off the top of my head, but it hasn't been anything significant.
I wanted to ask, for my, you know, we have actually three, four of our boards left in here.
If you don't mind going to the podium.
Miss, 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 uh.
You slanted like one would not be. I can tell you, I say what I have to say to your face.
It's about time.
Miss, Miss DeGruy.
Did I say something behind your back?
We'll find out.
Okay.
What's up?
You have a lot more experience than, than I'm sitting on this side of the table than I do, I've only been here a year.
I know, it's scary.
You've heard the discussion, what are our options on getting the grass cut in this town without making a political issue out of it? I mean, you know, you know, what, what can we do to resolve that?
Well, I mean, first of all, you shouldn't, first of all, you shouldn't have groups coming in here talking to you about stuff that should be talked to, to somebody else, the elected official that handles it. They shouldn't be here, first of all.
Elected officials shouldn't be here?
But, but. Some of them, but.
But last meeting, I asked for him to come in, cause I wanted to go to the source, I didn't want, you know, I listen to people and it's my job to listen, I hear, you know, we're the customer service department here, so, okay, let's get everybody in here, what's your problem?
I know, but see, you, you know, for the most part, I mean, I'm listening to Bill saying he's frustrated, he's frustrated, cause you keep bringing people in, asking them questions, and nothing ever gets resolved. So, if you try to resolve this, simply if you call Bob and say, look, all right, well, maybe call him.
You don't think we've done this? You don't think we've tried it?
Well, if it's not working, something's not right, something's not working, the communication isn't working.
That's why Bill's frustrated, that's why Bill's frustrated, something's not working. And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to.
Okay.
Make it sound like, everyone thinks that Bill tries to bring everyone in here like I'm the savior, I'm not, I, I asked the road commissioner to come in.
Right.
To try and have the conversation with the groups.
No, I know, but, but a lot of, a lot of people are coming in and nothing's ever getting resolved.
One of the problems I see is, we don't have a line item on our budget for recreation, so it's delegated to different departments and it's very fragmented, so the perception is that there's these special interest groups. But the special interest groups are my kids and your kids and it's the whole community.
Right, but you do.
So I don't see that as a special.
You do have a line item for field and watering, I believe, right?
Yeah, but those, we changed those at town meeting.
They're not there anymore, you know, so.
So you dissolved that.
Yeah, it needs to be targeted, otherwise we wouldn't have the discussion, so we need more detail on the budget.
I mean, as far as the mowing, I know they always tried to do as much as they could, they did at least every field once a week.
Once a week, that's all they wanted now, it's stopped.
Right, but, okay, so I, I'm unaware of that, cause, I mean, I've been going down to the baseball field and it's mowing.
Because someone's been mowing it, because the volunteers are mowing it.
No, they're doing a nice, okay.
It stopped after the election.
Okay, so.
So, what do you know?
If you weren't, you have three, you have three other selectmen here, and I'm, you don't have to answer them if you don't want.
I, if it were me, I would just go talk to Bob.
I, I, I've tried to reach out to him, you know, he didn't wanna come tonight, I mean.
Okay, well, I mean, I know he's busy too, but.
So, so in the meantime, people want services, they pay taxes, the services aren't delivered in their opinion, and here we are, you know?
Okay, well, I mean, I know the highway department, you know, from the last few years, they took on some of the other projects in town, like the Bagnall School, they, they did a lot of the site work, so when that happens, other things aren't happening. So, somehow you gotta work out a happy medium.
And what we're talking about tonight is, what we're talking about to bring you up to speed, is two fields are not being mowed, mowed, Shanahan, Washington Park are no longer being mowed, they've been, they've been getting mowed.
I think Shanahan is, I think it's the Pines.
The softball field, I'm sorry, I said it wrong, the softball field is not getting mowed, and the Washington Park's not getting mowed.
So can we temporarily pay for another pine, meet with Bob at sometime in July, and then if we have to reallocate the funds, we're gonna have to do it at this town meeting, we'll move the money.
I think it was fifty dollars last week for me to have that field's cut.
So, so when someone doesn't do their job, we should turn around?
I, I get, you've already touched on that, where it's an elected position.
Yep, I'm not, wasn't going there again.
Right, but he's in charge of that department and what gets done, so the selectmen don't have any say as to what's gonna happen there, you can only ask.
Can only use the pharmacy.
Right.
That's it.
So.
Pharmacy's cheap and then every other alternative.
But I mean, ten years ago, Bob wanted his position changed to an appointed position and nobody ever thought it was an important thing, we supported it, it didn't happen.
I thought it failed at the ballot, I thought, didn't it go there?
It does, yeah, just like, you know, we never thought anyone was gonna buy the sand pit property, but the voters came out and bought it, I mean, we didn't buy it, you guys keep saying we bought it, but we didn't. You know, you have to realize what you're saying, and if you irritate people, then all of a sudden you don't get cooperation. You know, you have to realize what you're saying, and if you irritate people, then all of a sudden you don't get cooperation. So, you know, you gotta be careful of what you're doing.
Dan, I think it failed at the ballot because it was more than one position looking to go from elected to appointed.
You were a selectman.
And I think that's why it failed.
You can't make everybody happy, am I correct when I say that?
He said he does in his letter.
But at the same time, you know, you come in, your, your job is very limited. I mean, you oversee the budget, you hire-
With the planning board, and people didn't want the planning board to be appointed.
I'm not saying not care, it's just-
Let it go.
We don't have to show up. Well, you know, well, if that's what you think, but, I mean, you do have to show up, you have to, you know-
My problem is, you know what my problem is? My problem is I let the people talk, I let the people, I let, let them, if they have a problem, I let them come in, let them voice their opinion. Maybe that was never done in the past, I don't know, maybe that's my problem. But the point being is, since the election, two fields are not getting mowed, people have been coming in regularly complaining about the money misspent down there. And I just wanna get it to the point where it's taken care of once and for all. That's all, that's all I wanna do.
But, I mean, that's just a bargaining chip, people are coming at you, saying things were done illegally and everything else. All that money was properly allocated, as far as I know, for projects that were taking place. Now you've got CPA money going into, you know, all the different parks, which is opening it up to be more than just Groveland use now, because you're using CPA money. I mean, other people can come in and start asking for using the property. Then your volunteers that are taking care of your fields and doing a great job are gonna start saying, you know what, why should I do it? Because now there's a team out of who knows where, coming in and using the property.
But you can still charge them fees, you know?
You can, and that's why I said at the town meeting a while ago, you know, if they dissolve this pines budget, you know, the, the, um, development money, they're gonna have to have a budget for doing field services and everything else, you're gonna have to have use fees. And, you know, then you wouldn't have to have this discussion. If you had use fees, you'd have a budget coming in, money coming in, and you could probably control the field services then. And if you got an appointed highway commissioner, you know? But in the meantime, you're just beating your head against the wall, you're bringing people in, you're getting them mad at you.
Bring them in, they brought themselves in.
Alright, well, they come in cuz they're mad.
Right, there you go.
But all due respect, I mean, you tried to get the appointed position, you couldn't pull it off, so we could try, and we, that's all we could do was try.
Well, it, yeah, exactly. I mean, when people don't realize that it's a smart idea, you know, they start seeing this on TV, eventually they'll say, geez, they don't, they don't seem to think that they're getting what they want out of this position. But if they're in control of it because they appoint it, now they have a say. So, but in the meantime, you can listen to everyone's complaints, but you can't do anything about it because you don't have a budget to do it. So, you know, you gotta cut it off at some point, and then try and work out the issue with the department that can take care of it. In a nice way. Cuz that's the only option you have.
But, but we also have to change the attitude that these aren't just special interest groups, these are everybody's kids in town.
Exactly, and I mean, I've, I've spent twenty years down there with half of these people, you know?
You know, they are special interest group, but it's, it's kids playing soccer, it's kids playing baseball, whose kids are they?
Do you think anyone, do you think anyone watching this meeting tonight wants to volunteer their time at Town of Groveland? I don't think so, I really don't, I don't.
Well, luckily, there's still a good group of us that do, you know?
I, I thank you all for sticking around.
But-
No, we haven't given up yet, I mean, we oscillate, it peaks and valleys, you know, it's like manic depression here.
But I was unaware that you had an issue with getting the fields mowed, I didn't know anything about it.
That's what this is all about.
Three or four weeks, three or four weeks. So, there's, you know, there's some baseball people there, they can chime in on it, but, you know, we're trying to just get the grass cut, it's- Let Derek in.
Derek binding Berrywood Lane again. This'll be short, but we tried diplomacy, and last year there was a new pines committee supposedly formed back in September. And the road commissioner refused to work with one of the individuals that was nominated. That's not very diplomatic, and I don't think that committee ever met, did they?
I didn't see him.
Well, that was in twenty twelve, and I brought that up last year, last September, and there was a new committee that was supposedly to be formed.
I mean, there was no reason to keep our committee because the plan was made for the project. It was in Denise's hands to handle, you know, putting it up to bid, this project is going. I mean, we really didn't have a, a use to be there anymore because our work was done.
There was no oversight, one person was making every decision down there, whether, were the right ones or the wrong ones, and that's why we're in the situation that we're in right now. Because three years went by and this is where we end up. But, that being said, uh, one quick question for Denise. Have there been any turf applications down at the pines this year, was that cut out?
Uh, no, prescription turf comes down regularly.
Have they been down yet this year? I haven't seen any signage.
Yeah.
So, that's in the budget?
They've been down.
Okay.
Yeah, and they did on the, um, utility fields and on the new areas, they did a dormant seeding. So, I guess that won't start to come up until the fall.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any wanna talk on behalf of the pines recreation area and the boat ramp, cut grass cutting? Everyone said their piece? Okay, well, go ahead.
I don't want you guys to forget about that, uh, Bill Daley, Severnham Lock. You know, that mower that was purchased, the pines might, I want you guys to remember that. That was for the pines use only, and, and also, there has to be some way when there's insubordination in a department to take control of that, as a board, there has to be. So, I mean, I don't know municipal government, um, or the, the ways to move around, but there has to be some sort of ways. I mean, if, if an, if an appointed, uh, if an elected individual became incapacitated, I mean, what, I, I, why, why are we held hostage, you know?
Does anyone else have any input, they wanna talk about what?
I think we gotta wait till he, Bobby comes in and explains what's going on.
What happens in July if he doesn't wanna come in and talk?
You can't wait till July with Washington Park, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous.
Yep, I agree.
But everything's in there, I mean, the contracts for the pines, what was supposed to be done, free to the town. Um, there is a plan out there, I, I, I just, I, no one, no one will give it to me, but I'll get it, I'll get it. That was to show what the contractor was to do upon completion, so, um, it's all in the folder, you guys should definitely look, look at that hard. It's all pretty spelled out, along with the Bagnall, the mower, and, um, I, I, I think the mowing up Washington Park, something needs to be figured out. There needs to be some way to, to figure that out.
We have, there's no money Denise, anywhere to mow the Washington Park, cuz that's, that, it's a town property, yes, it is.
I, I'd have to look and see, there's no budget for-
So, can we, can we write a letter tonight on behalf of the five selectmen telling him that we want them two parks mowed?
Sure.
And why are we gonna have an extra employee when the work isn't being done? So, I, I know it's a touchy subject, but why, we hired another individual for more mowing, and now there's less mowing.
Let's just, let's just take this route.
Well, it's more money, I mean, it's-
We'll take this route. Write the letter to him, we're telling him we want those two parks mowed. When he sends a letter back saying they're not gonna get mowed, now I think we're gonna have the upper, we'll have the upper hand to say the mower comes back and the guy goes.
Yeah, and that's it, I mean, that's it, simple, I mean, it's the real world stuff.
And as far as the, um, I lost my train of thought, um, you talked about-
One other thing I should mention, he hired two, he had two retired people that used to do mowing.
Yep, yep.
I know one has passed away.
Right.
Not sure if he ever found somebody, you know?
So, he had come before us and said, he requested one, he wanted two new full timers, Betty was around then, and we said one. We gave him one cuz he needed them to get rid of the two part timers for a full timer to do the lawn mowing. So, that's, that's how that went.
And the forty-seven thousand dollar lawn mower purchased out of those funds, mowing everything but?
Right. Grass cutting, so that's what we'll do. In the interim, in the interim, I don't know what it costs to get that mowed over there last week. We're gonna have to take the money out of the two hundred thousand, out of that money, and, and pay to have that field mowed. And if it's, if it's, the wish of the board, we take some of that money, can we move, can we use it to do the other park? Or we can't use that money to go that route?
No, it's pines money, I, I mean, I'll look, it, it depends how much it'll cost. If it was fifty dollars for this field and it's fifty dollars for next week for that field.
You have one here, you have two over there.
I'll get an estimate and see, and then we'll figure it out.
Can we just get the, someone to mow it, a little bit to mow it, and then that just comes out of the, the next, next annual budget?
Right, but here we go again, we're gonna, we're, I know it's a lot, not a lot of money, but if we're gonna get a bid, can you send the, the five selectmen the bid? What it's gonna cost to mow them, so it's up and up, and we don't have a problem?
Well, if it's fifty bucks, it really doesn't, I can just hire someone and have them go cut it for fifty dollars as long as I find.
About the Washington Park, what, where, where are we gonna find the money?
I need to, I don't know, cuz I don't know how much it's gonna cost.
No one's gonna mow the, the two, three parks up Washington Park for fifty bucks, if fifty bucks is on my lawn.
Oh, she's talking about the field over here got mowed for fifty bucks.
There's no way, I mean-
I don't know.
It's a softball field?
High school charge to mow a field?
What?
Softball field?
No, the, the, they came over and mowed it, and then it didn't get mowed right, it was a mess, so Denise hired another contractor to come in and re-mow it and clean it.
Bill, just to reiterate with the fields of Washington Park, um, so if the highway department refuses to mow them, they just, it's either up to the people that use them to mow them?
Right, and what I'm saying, it's not, that's not fear.
But the budget was approved to get, have that mowed.
And what I'm trying to say is, what I'm trying to, someone just said a minute ago, be diplomatic, I'm trying to be diplomatic. We're gonna write a letter as a five-member board to the road commissioner and say-
Okay.
Those two parks are gonna be mowed, we want them mowed, if they're not mowed, now we have the upper hand to say, okay, mower comes back, person gets laid off or whatever.
And that's how we can pay for the mow.
And that's what I'm saying.
That's perfect, that's perfect.
Subject to reallocation.
That's great.
Is the board good with that?
Yeah.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Think you have to be.
I don't think you know-
I mean, it's just, the money just keeps flying out and nothing's getting done, nothing's ever finished, you know, so-
Okay.
Um, alright, no, I'm good, so-
Now, let me just, let me go, I got my train of thought back.
Yeah.
So now, we're talking about the pines rec area, okay? I've said it before and I'm gonna say it again, you guys need to have someone down there that knows what's going on. They need to have, everyone keeps criticizing me for committees, don't call it a committee.
I'll take that project over myself.
But I'm just saying, we need to have someone down there for checks and balances, I'll say that, checks and balances.
Yeah.
So, we need to get people down there for checks and balance, and I'm not saying all girls softball and all, um, baseball, whatever. A little bit of here, a little from the girls, a little here, get a little bit of people, five different people, whatever, from different, maybe someone from the boat ramp.
And then what?
Have them all discuss what they wanna do, what wanna get done down there, what they wanna see done, and have like a little committee, an operating, call it an operating committee, whatever. I mean, I think that's the only thing, that's, that's gonna give you a checks and balances.
With that said, if we go that route, then, then whatever highway has in mind on there needs to freeze, to stop, stop the hemorrhaging.
Need to come in here and have the conversation. But right now, and I'm not picking on Denise and Bob, I'm road commissioner, these guys are the ones that have been doing it. I, I think it was, I don't know how it was, it was before my time, but whatever, so-
I have no problem.
You guys want checks and balances, the only way I can see checks and balances, that's checks and balances right there. Don't have it all lopsided, five people, four people, whatever it takes, get down, have a meeting, talk about it, that's it.
The problem down there now was, you, you know, was built not per a plan, so, you know, it's, you gotta get the engineers back in there and, and, and it's gonna be significantly-
Well, there's no, there's no performance bonds, we're not gonna pull a performance bond.
There should be though, there should be a hundred thousand dollar one, but-
We're gonna have to work with what we got.
Right, right.
What's there is there, we're gonna pick up the pieces like I said before, and we're gonna work with it, or we're gonna, you know what I mean? The past is the past, let's pick up the pieces and work with it.
If you're telling me if I form a committee and I, and I head up, and I head up that-
I said it two months ago.
And I had the construction down there.
Don't say committee, I've been criticized for too many committees.
Well, if, if I head up a group of people to finish that project, to finish that project, are, are you telling me you'll, you'll freeze any future work on it right now?
Listen, I'm, I'm talking, let these guys weigh in on it, I'm talking about running the facility, the facility.
Okay.
Okay, that's all, I'm not talking about narrowing it, taking the project over, I'm, I just saying, the project, the whole piece of property.
Before I forget on the boat ramp, is the town even insured the right marine insurances to, to put that boat ramp in the river? I mean, what happens if, if, if a highway laborer gets, gets hit by a plank and injured and, and in the river? I mean, that's, I know that's a different, it's a different category for my, my company with insurance, marine, airways, airfields.
So, we have to hire divers to do the in-water work, our highway isn't doing the in-water work, they're doing the out-water work and, with the planks on the ground.
A diver, for what?
We have to hire environmental divers to go down there and do whatever they have to do with the planks. So, we have to hire somebody that would have-
Necessary on that job.
According to the Army Corps of Engineers, there is.
I have the plans and the specs right here, there's no, I don't see any mention of divers, but even if there are divers, if you hire divers, I don't know if you got them on Craigslist or will you hire them? But if you do hire them, how do they have the right insurances? They're not gonna, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be-
Right.
A, a, a company of divers with, with a ten million dollar policy, and they're certainly not gonna be, take a, come out on a rental by the hour.
This is a good thing for you.
Terrible for me.
No, hold on, this is a good thing for you. So, turn around, it's not gonna happen, it sounds like till November, right? That project's not gonna go on till November? So now, we should have the checks and balances, if we can get all these people together, we should have the checks and balances. That's how I'm looking at it, that's part of the project down there, so we, we have a group of people that's gonna overlook the project.
If you look at the bids between the highway department and Quirk who was low, I mean, you gotta remember, highway department's salary's not in that number. The work that's done isn't close to what the other contractor would've done, with the stone skull protection, gabbing mattresses and all that.
These people don't even, you and I know that conversation, but-
Right, right, no, it's great, right, 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 but the guys that, the guys that bid on it to put it in don't even know what that stuff is, and, and- So, at the end of the day, I love to know the numbers at the end of the day, cuz we all know what Quirk's number is with a hundred percent payment performance bond to finish that, done.
Right.
Last winter.
Yep.
Last winter.
Yep, but what I'm trying to explain to you is I, I clearly, I clearly hear where you're coming from.
But I don't think-
Project right now is not, it's going to be done in the fall. Those answers we can get, right? We can get those answers, but in the interim, you wanna make sure the project is done right, we need to have a group of people make sure that project is done right.
I just wanna interrupt for a second.
Sure.
My name's Erin Merrill, and this is Bethany Silva. We are members of your Groveland Recreation Department, appointed by you, who you don't use. We are at the pines, we have softball, which our fields don't get mowed. For various reasons, they're not getting mowed. We have fields going in, we're doing the CPA work down there, CPC work. Why hire or put together a committee when you have people that you've already appointed? You don't talk to us, you don't use us.
We don't-
How about, hey, guys, you know, this is what we need to get down, down there, and come on, let's, let's work this out.
Okay, hold on a second, hold on, thanks. Denise, next meeting, put the rec on the, on the agenda. That resolves that, we'll, we'll talk to you.
But seriously, like, why put together a committee?
But we haven't heard from you guys either, we haven't heard from you guys.
We're here all the time, we're here, Dan's here all the time.
What I'm saying is you need to come in as a committee, sit with us and we'll have that conversation.
We've never been invited, when you're inviting committees in, they weren't on your agenda.
Erin, you're invited to every meeting.
I'm always, you know, I watch you on TV.
I, I have one question though, if there is a committee that's formed, um, or the rec committee volunteers our time to do it and overlook things, ultimately, we have no actual authority, correct? This is still run by the highway department, the same people that are, we are putting into question, and the reason why we want answers for this is cuz they're still the ones responsible for the future work. I wanna know what they did, because I wanna know how they're gonna move forward with it. So, those are answers I want, and if we form a committee, are we, are we actually giving us any authority? Is there any changes that are gonna be made because of that?
Okay, so, I'm not being wise when I say this, I can't give you the answers, and you probably should've asked those questions to the highway, that's how it works, and that's what's frustrating, you know what I mean? So, now I'm trying to do, is I'm trying to say, okay, we'll have you guys come in, we're gonna try and get some people to-
But the research that's been done, if we look into this-
Yep.
And it looks like there's something that's off, and we want answers and we demand answers.
Yep.
He knows that we're looking and we're watching, right?
Maybe the group, you gotta get the answers.
We have a lot of, a lot of things already put together, why, how do we get this investigated further?
You want me to do?
How do we investigate further these, the, the things that have already gone on?
How do you investigate further?
Further, I want, if he will not answer, how do I make him answer?
I can't.
Just a suggestion.
I'm not being wise.
Bill, how about having them, put them in writing, put their questions in writing, forward it to the road commissioner for action. See if you can get the answers.
The reason why we want answers and the reason why we wanna hash out what's gone on is cuz he's, the highway department is still responsible for the project to be finished. So, moving forward, it's the same people, so I want answers for what's already gone down.
And watch, what I'm trying, what I was trying to do, and maybe I didn't spell this out right, moving forward, we probably shouldn't go the route we're been.
Right.
Okay, so how do we change that? We, I'm not gonna take the time out of my day to go down there and run the project, I can't, I don't think any of these guys can. So, what I'm trying to do is to say, maybe there must be a group of people-
Right, and I agree, absolutely.
Hold on, they can go back and find the answers they're looking for, as a group.
Right.
Sit down, as a group, and if you have to go hire someone, you gotta go wherever you gotta go, do it, and then come before us with all your findings, and then, there we are.
Well, a lot of that's already been done, as you can tell, somebody's already volunteered their time and did a great deal of investigation and demanding documents and putting it all together to raise questions that are not being answered.
In the beginning of this meeting, I said that legally, I can't say names.
Right.
Okay, I can't talk about anything like, anything that went on, fraud, I can't sit there and pinpoint and say, this went wrong, that went wrong, I can't, I don't have the right enough evidence.
My question about the committee though, is if the committee's formed-
Is this hearsay or is this factual? And I'm not trying to be wise.
Nope, I agree.
You need to come in here with factual, factual evidence.
Right.
That's what you need.
Right, with answers from somebody that's.
Yeah, we have a problem, we'll deal with it, but until it's factual, I don't see how, maybe I'm wrong, help me out guys.
No, I just wanted to comment, so the project that Community Preservation allocated money to is being overseen by the Recreation Department, the Recreation Committee, not the Highway Department.
Or Future, right.
So that's the one who's handling the majority of the work that's being done down there now.
With the exception of the funds that were already available.
Correct, but that's, that's frozen for maintenance. So the only thing that, to my knowledge, that the highway department is still handling at the pines is finishing the bathrooms and the boat ramp.
The boat ramp and the bathroom. That's where we left it.
Everything else is now falling under recreation.
The boat ramp and the bathrooms, that was it.
Right.
That's under recreation.
That was it, that's why.
Right, okay.
Now, we had the.
I'm putting them out to bid.
Right, because they were in-house, the bathrooms were done in-house by the highway, and the bathrooms are in-house.
I have no plans, that's the problem. No, I don't have plans from Recreation for the CPA money that they submitted, so that's what we're waiting on.
The bathrooms, the bathrooms don't have a plan. It's being. I'm talking about, we, we took the bathrooms.
Twenty-five thousand. Twenty-five and fifty-six, fifty-six for the, they said from the.
But what happened is, in one of our past meetings, the road commissioner was going to finish the bathrooms, because he started it, and he was gonna finish the boat ramps with the money that was allocated. Those two projects he was gonna complete, line, line striping, curbing, and something else for like seventy-five hundred dollars, don't quote me on the exact number, that was him.
Who just did the loan that was great?
The highway department.
Right, yeah, right.
Don, do you mind if I just interrupt for a second?
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, Bill Dark, town moderator. I'm saying that. Former board.
Trying to moderate this meeting.
Former selectman. Just, real quick, I, just a couple of points. People have said, you know, highway department's in charge, but the highway department's never been in charge, I mean, maybe things changed, but ultimately, all that money, at least initially, comes out of the pines rec development committee, it's not a highway department budget. So, you know, again, way back when, before I left, we had the committee, and I disagreed slightly with Don, I think it should have stayed in place and overseen the project, but ultimately.
I agree.
The board of selectmen is the town's managers, you are the town managers. And so, and again, Bobby, the highway commissioner does have his certain budget, but his budget isn't to do the pines job. You know, all that money that came out from the sand, whatever, you know better than I do how much the town, yeah, okay, that money went into the fund, and that was overseen by the town of Groveland. Now, after I left, if, if, if it was decided that Bob was gonna be in charge of it, that's fine, but there's nothing that says that he is in charge, ultimately, you guys are in charge of it.
And Bill, let me explain what happened, and it's gotta come out sooner or later, I think what these people are after, money was spent, and it wasn't spent in the right places, and that's what they're after.
Well, but, you know, and I keep hearing that, and I.
Things, and that's what they're after.
And I'd be real careful saying stuff like that until we actually looked at where the, and I, and I actually have no idea, because I don't watch any of these meetings, okay, you can see why, I'm sorry, but. I have no idea, you know, about any of that, but I'd be real careful, and I, my, if I was sitting where you were, then I would certainly try to work it out with the road commissioner somehow, but beyond that, I would, I would want some people to look at, you know, where, you know, at this point, what has been spent, and actually nail down, if things have been spent inappropriately, then you can identify that, but I wouldn't go around saying things have been spent poorly or inappropriately unless you knew for sure. And, and just from there, go forward, and I, again, I have a problem in the fact that the plan wasn't followed, I don't know whoever decided that that wasn't gonna happen, I mean, it was, we sat down, had, and worked on it, and, and it made sense, and because originally, we were just gonna, we were gonna do a plan before it was excavated, before all the sand was taken out of there, but then it didn't seem to make much sense, because we really didn't know what we were gonna be left with, what, what the footprint was gonna be when it was all said and done. So we said, let's get most of the sand out of there, and then at that point, we could see, and we had a plan, and, you know, there was input, and everybody was on board, took care of everything, and, you know, but at some point, it was decided that it wasn't gonna be followed, you know, and I keep hearing again, mentioned about other boards.
There was a meeting after you guys, that most of you were at, it took a year to get to Ann's office, that said that the order of the simulations were being changed.
But I guess, you know, regardless, ultimately, you guys are in charge, and I know that the road commissioner is, is an elected position, so yeah, you can't just order him, and that was a frustration of ours, believe me, we tried, and, and Bob wasn't favor of it at the time.
He still isn't favored.
But, you know, again, ultimately, you guys need to put something together to have it overseen and done, and you should know every step of the way, what's being spent and where and why, I mean, and then, then, then all this stuff gets taken care of.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything on the subject, any of the board want to discuss it any further?
No, I think it's gonna discuss it. Too much.
Well, thank you, Erin, for coming on that topic, and I don't know, I don't think we even resolved anything, but, aside the point, right. So. Moving on, at eight-thirty, we had a discussion regarding two ninety-nine and three oh-one Main Street. Someone was gonna come in on behalf of that. So we are gonna do the, we are gonna do the letter, right?
Yep.
My name is Greg Stark, I'm at three oh-six Main Street and one off King Way. I'm here in regards to the gas company, the gas station property. Been a. Resident here my entire life, my family's been here for probably about a hundred years, I've been in the square, doing business in the square since nineteen forty-seven. And for that reason, I got put onto the Bridge and Square Committee back in the nineties. And we got very involved with what was gonna happen for the bridge, and at the same time, we were looking into all the aspects of the bridge, and so I became very involved with what was happening in the square. In the last few weeks, I got notice from the property owner who, who owns that property, and it was probably about a year ago or so, I had told her that, you know, I was a passionate lover of the town of Groveland, and I told her if she was ever going to sell that property, that she'd give the town first refusal, because I thought that that was the best thing. So, she called me up a couple of weeks ago and told me that, that she had sent the letter to the board of selectmen and hadn't heard anything. So, I wanted to come to the board here and explain that I spent probably ten to fifteen years on that board, you know, trying to improve the downtown, we had hearings on that committee, trying to find out all the things that needed to be done to the square, and during that process, the selectmen were involved, went into Boston to multiple meetings. We also had our senators and our representatives involved, trying to help us straighten away some of the problems in downtown, and so, my feeling was, is that I needed to come in tonight and try to show you that the town does have quite a bit of passion for this situation, and there's a lot of history to it, and so I've asked some of the older selectmen to come in, and, and I got ahold of Senator Tar, as well as the Preservation Committee have been quite involved with it, and I don't know how much you know that they were involved with it. So, I don't wanna spend a lot of time, timing's everything, as I can see what happened here tonight, so I'm hoping maybe some of the other people could come in and discuss a little bit what they were involved with during that time.
Let me say, number one, that I know that you had called me, I've been busy, I didn't get back to you, for that reason, I usually do get back to you, as you know, I know Denise had talked to us as a board earlier on, before she went on vacation, and discussed this thing, and I think we all pretty much said, we don't know where we're gonna find the money, and that we don't, you know, as, as a board, we didn't even know where we're gonna find the money to do this project. By the time you tear the building, buy the property, tear the building down, and build a park, you're in it for a million, million-two probably, somewhere, maybe I'm wrong, but you got a lot of money involved, so, we, we, we weren't discussing it because we didn't feel we had the money, and it wasn't that we were trying to ignore you or whatever, we just felt like it wasn't.
Well, clearly, there's a lot of history to this, it's not, I did not want this thing to get run under the table, because of whatever potential numbers you think it might be. The town in the past had already made offers to it, nothing to do with me or my committee, the town had, back in two thousand and five, actually had come up with, you know, a plan that the town had made to come up with, if you haven't seen it before.
I've seen it.
You've seen it, okay, well, they came up with a plan, had it engineered, I mean, clearly, this passion about having the thing done, I'm saying that it should be looked at, and it should be, try to find out what, what monies need to be acquired, what needs to happen to it, and, you know, I also asked Senator Tar if he had any thoughts with some of our, our other politicians, that maybe there is some other money out there, there also may be some CPA money, so, you know, I think it's worth looking at, if, you know, you can't just say, we're not interested because it's too much money, I think it's, it's something that's an opportunity for the town, there's some problems downtown. I mean, I've been here my whole life, I've been hearing, since I was a little kid, that, you know, there's no parking, we just had a, we just had a bridge built in the town, which took away parking, it was all set at the hearings, it was all, it was all documented, you know, this is our time to hopefully take a look at the problem, it's gonna go up for sale now, and we have an opportunity, let's not let it go by the wayside.
We had trouble finding money for a fire truck for years. The numbers I saw for the Getty was five hundred fifty thousand dollars, is that what, minimum we're looking at, right?
She had that up for sale for over a million a few years ago.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking a couple of years ago, the latest numbers I saw was five hundred.
Town, the town made an offer, I believe, for four hundred and fifty thousand, providing that it was, the property was cleaned, that's the way I.
And it was cleaned, right?
That's correct, that's why it's now going back up for sale again.
Now it's up to five fifty, is what she was requesting, first refusal, something like that.
But whatever she put the offer in for.
We don't, unless you can get a bond or a grant or something, we don't have six hundred thousand dollars to put towards.
Yeah, we can't mow the lawn, right?
We can't find fifty dollars to mow the lawn, we can't find five hundred thousand dollars to buy a Getty station, maybe it's an eyesore, maybe, you know, you wanna put parking down there, maybe the town needs parking down there. But, we don't have the money for it, we don't have funds in the Groveland town budget to do it.
I get it, I get it.
Can you pass the plans along?
But this is how, you know, how you get things done, you find out things that the town wants to have done here.
But wasn't there a warrant two, two town meetings ago for, was there a warrant or something?
Uh, yes, um.
The town voted, voted, or it was tabled, I believe, so it didn't get too far, so I'm not sure the support, what I'm hearing from people is, hear me out, we spent three point six million, three six two five, to buy Apostle on Center Street, form busing property, and it should have been financed, in my opinion, through CPA funds, it wasn't, we're gonna ask, I mean, talk to the lady mayor about it, we're gonna see if we can get some special legislation maybe through that, so we can use some of that funds to service that debt, so that's an additional tax burden. The other two properties, the Angelina, and what was the other property there?
Mattingly.
Yeah, that was another, how much, more than, another, almost two million? Few hundred thousand, but it was paid for through CPA, which is taxpayer money, you can call it a ham sandwich, it comes out of somebody's pocket and they live in Groveland, okay? Town, town, town forest, how much was that, nine hundred and change? All right, my rough numbers, in the last decade, this town bought about, what, sixty-seven million dollars worth of property, I mean, I wanna stop the spending spree unless somebody's got, you know, a bottom or some wealth, but the, the, the tax rate, when I moved there in two thousand and five, was nine dollars and change. Okay, it's up fifty percent, so we got prop, prop five in town, not two and a half, we got prop five going on there, so, you know, the people I'm listening to, on tax and spend levels, they don't wanna say pump the brakes, we don't need to buy anymore, and if you take that off of the tax roll, we're gonna lose seven thousand and change every year, we lost thirty-something thousand dollars over on that Center Street property, how are you replacing that revenue? So, it's not just, okay, we can buy it, we do lower your tax base, which, this town really kinda has an anti-business sentiment, so it's a catch twenty-two, and the burden ends up on the, on the, on, on the residential bedroom community taxpayer, so, you know, unless we get some grant money, unless we get some more local relief from Beacon Hill, which, the local aid, you know, they bump us up a couple bucks and we lost it on the school district because of the wealth formula, we went, we went one step forward and two back, so, the tax burden on, on this town has done nothing but go up, and I hear people say, gas station's been there forever, I don't care, it doesn't bother me, and, and I kinda feel, I drive right by it, I don't even know it's there, you know.
Well, I, I know a lot of people that have a very different opinion of that.
Well.
Okay, and, and I can't attest to how much you possibly overspent for other properties in town, I have nothing to do with that, I can tell you what I see with the public, I can tell you what, why these people are here, why the business people are here, this is an economic development project for the downtown, that's what it always was from way back, and, and sometimes it's about doing the right thing for the right reasons.
Let me ask you this, I mean, you know, how many businesses are downtown?
Well, maybe there would be more, if we could park downtown.
But, but why can't they pull in and chip in on it, I mean, why can't they do that? You're asking for public resources for, and again, I, I think you may have a conflict, you have a plumbing business right there, right? So is this parking for your business, I'm, I'm asking.
I'm asking about something for the, for downtown Groveland, this isn't, this isn't about me.
Is it? I'm asking you, is it for your business?
It's about everybody.
Ed, you wanted to say something? Just jump in for a second, I just, sorry, Bill Dark, town moderator. A couple of things, this in no way has anything to do with Greg Stark's plumbing business, okay?
But nothing, but your business is down the street too, so we got two bit local businesses, we can find, you have your interest, but.
Right, it has nothing, it has, and I've always said that, everybody knows, I'm a dentist, and there, so, it has nothing to do with Greg, yeah, I need it for me, no, it has nothing to do with me either, it goes back to like Greg talked, we got a P wed grant way, is that what that's called, way back when, when, just, just two minutes, I'll be brief, two different issues, okay, so, that was, the whole park being redone was proposed by one of the citizens, she wasn't involved in town government, she just looked at it, she hadn't been down, she said, you know, she did some history and said, this used to be, they called it Elm Park, why do they call it Elm Park? So anyway, long story short, we got a million bucks from the state, was that what it was, somewhere around there, and that work was done, it was taken care of, and it was always a priority to finish the project, which was the gas station right there, it didn't make any sense right where it is, so, it was a priority, I understand money is tight, I'll just tell you one other quick story, go back to nineteen ninety-four, you know, I sound like one of these old folks, again, when I first got elected, we had no money at all, none, zero, you have to tell me, we had thirty-eight bucks left, we said we'd buy a couple of pieces of six pack of beer, okay, there really was nothing, and, and, and Nun's Hill came up for sale, and at the time, it was just me and Barbara Sheehan, there were two of us, and we had no money, and they were asking two million dollars, okay, so if we said, well, we don't have two million dollars, how are we gonna pay for this? It would never happen, now, I think that, years later, most people would agree that VZ Park is probably a good thing, instead of having twelve houses up there, okay, but anyway, we worked the process, we ended up getting, and you can, I can't remember the names of the grants, we got the self-help grant, and then we got the two hundred thousand preservation restriction, yeah, I mean, we got all this money, and then we got the VZs who finally came and donated the last hundred thousand, so, out of the original two million dollar project, we ended up paying a million dollars for it, and we paid town money a few hundred thousand, two or three hundred thousand, so, you can't just say, we have no money, we're not gonna even bother looking into it, you have to at least look into it, and then if you say that, after looking into it, you, you talk to people and you really do not have any money, that's one thing, but to not even bother looking into it, doesn't make any sense, you have to look into it.
Do you have a copy of that warrant, Denise?
Greg, just, just some, I just have some problem with the, with this design, it's a beautiful area, a beautiful, but just some questions maybe, first of all, who, and I don't know who, I don't know who did it, but anyway. The entrance, the entrances, the entrance is over here, not on town property, it's Norwood Insurance property, that there, and, so I got a problem with, with the entrance there. The entrance or exit over here onto the bridge, obviously, it, it's gonna be right turning only, you're not physically gonna be able to make a left turn coming out of that safely, make a left turn coming out of the, out of this area, you're already into the, into the area where they're queuing up, it, it's a beautiful area, but this is continuing upon tearing down the post office, tearing down the gas station, if they're looking for a half a million dollars just for the property, what is your, just a ballpark figure, rough estimate, to, to tear that down and to, to make this, at le, at a minimum of a half a million?
Let me just clarify, I, I didn't make that plan, okay, it was the town that, that had that plan made up by Oak Engineering, they made up, I believe, more than one plan, that doesn't have to be the plan, it was a, just a proposed plan in order to come up with a usage for the property, but I'm showing you the plan because I want you to see that in two thousand and five, the selectmen obviously had the vision for this in two thousand and five. You know, I obviously know things about it, but I, you know, I can't tell you more than that.
So Greg.
Go ahead, go ahead.
One minute, Dan, I agree one hundred and fifty percent with you, it's an eyesore, I have even said it to this board before.
We looked into buying it, actually, I called.
Right, it, it's an eyesore, and it kills me to go down there, I'd rather see someone renting it rather than leave it vacant, it's so ugly, I agree with you, I agree with you to the point where we do need parking in Groveland, we do, it's a busy street, we may have to put a light in or whatever, the plan's not the plan, this plan can be changed a million times, I agree with you there, what we need, and, and truly, Senator Tar's here, what we need is funding to do this, now, again, I'm not gonna call it a committee, but a group, do we put a group together and see what we can do to find funding, and then come back before us, that's what we need.
You've got the money, right?
You've got the check, right?
Aren't you the minority leader in the senate?
Would it surprise you to know that this money's earmarked in a bond bill, and if I tell you that tonight, will it make a difference?
Well, when you say the bond bill, is that more debt for the town of Groveland to tax pay, or is someone else gonna pay for it?
I'm gonna explain to you that.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. So, here's a copy. Hopefully I have enough. Want you to go to page two of what I handed you, want you to go to the second, the, the very bottom paragraph, I want you to read four lines up.
Second page, four lines up?
Four lines up.
Did we get six hundred grand? VZ, you ever heard of, uh, uh? Six hundred grand?
So, let me, let me just provide you with an explanation of what this is, and, and, and first of all, um, I want to clarify at the outset that my purpose in being here is not to tell anyone in this community what to do, the decisions about what to do in this situation are yours and yours exclusively. I am here to suggest to you that, uh, the history, as Greg recalled it, is accurate, and that many of us were involved in securing the original million dollar P wed so that we could conduct the improvements that happened at Elm Park, and that many of us were involved subsequently in trying to make sure that we maximize the potential, uh, given the bridge project, to be able to try to do something with this particular parcel of land. And many of us looked at this as a way to increase parking because of parking that was to be lost as a result of the bridge project, so we saw it in part as compensatory and part as expanding economic development. So, as a result of that, uh, many of us never gave up on the idea that this strategically important parcel could be secured and could be adapted to a use that provided public access, uh, particularly down to the river and, and some open space, some additional parking, and some general aesthetic improvement to the region where the Commonwealth is already spending millions of dollars to try to improve the area. So, as a result of that, in two thousand and fourteen, uh, the legislature approved a bond bill for various purposes, I've excerpted that for you, and I inserted into that bond bill an earmark for six hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of acquisition planning, designing, construction of exactly what we're talking about. Now, I need to explain the ramifications of that, it's not as if it's an appropriation, it's an earmark. Which means that of all the things in this general target area across the state, that the state could spend money on, this project is specifically earmarked in the universe. So, the governor and the administration could choose to release this money pursuant to the authorization of the legislature for this purpose. The governor and the administration could also choose to do nothing, they could also choose to do a lesser amount. But my point in telling you this is that this project is so important to a lot of us, that it's in play in this bond bill. We don't earmark bond bills for everything, we earmark bond bills for things we think are important. Now, with regard to debt, the debt would, is, this is a bond bill issued by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the debt service on that bond bill is paid for by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Now, because we're all concerned about how much money we borrow every year, the Commonwealth lives within a statutory bond cap to ensure that we don't borrow more than we can afford to pay for. And for those of you that are students of state government, you'll know that that went into effect after the Dukakis administration in the late nineteen eighties was actually borrowing and issuing bonds to pay for operating expenses of the state. Because that was an imprudent practice, we collectively, after that administration, adopted a cap to prevent any future administration from doing that, such that we live within a particular number, and it's about two billion dollars, just short of that, it, it adjusts periodically. So, in order for this money to be released, it would have to be included in something called a capital spending plan, which is when the administration puts together all of its borrowing and says, this is our plan to live within that cap. Now, unfortunately, right now, we're the victim of, of a little bit of bad timing, because the capital spending plan for this year was just released. And obviously, this project is not included in it because we had not had these conversations. However, uh, I remain, uh, of the opinion that we could try to get it released, either in the immediate future or in the not-so-distant future. So, Mr. Chairman, I agree with your suggestion, and I know that you're wary of committees, and I know that you've been accused of having too many. But it would seem to me, if I could give you some friendly advice, that if there are a group of people in town interested in this, that it might make sense to constitute a group, let's call it a task force, if we don't like the word committee, of people that are interested to try to identify resources that could be available. Because, Dan, I'm also appreciative of your suggestion, I get the fact that the community, like many municipalities across this Commonwealth, are struggling to find resources, even to pay for the most basic of things, I get that. I would also point out that many of us just worked very hard in the legislature to increase funding in the senate budget to eighty percent for regional school transportation, which is something that's very important for the Penticat Regional School District. We also worked hard to make sure that we got to full funding for the circuit breaker for special education, and we also worked hard to try to get at least fifty dollars minimum per pupil spending for districts like Penticat that oftentimes wind up on the short end of the stick of an educational funding formula in the form of chapter seventy, that I personally, along with many others, have been trying to change for the past several years because it is inequitable to our part of the state. So, I understand the financial situation, I sympathize with it. I'm a champion of fiscal discipline as much as anyone in the legislature. So, what I'm suggesting is, when you have something that emerges as a priority for a community, that everyone, or many people, suggests is a good idea, but you just can't pay for it, then maybe it's the right time to give some people the opportunity to see if there is a way to pay for it. And let me suggest a couple of additional possibilities. Number one, many folks are not aware that the, through the Community Preservation Act, you can actually issue a bond and back that bond with a, a percentage of your receipts from the Community Preservation Act. Now, the hook on that and the downside to that is when you do that, you're committed to the CPA for the number of years of the bond, you obviously couldn't pass a bond and then repeal the CPA or dial back the CPA percentage, but it is a possibility. In addition to that, uh, we have something known as a park grant. Now, I hope no one asks me what that acronym stands for, but it is for things of this nature, and we've worked to secure several of them for communities in our senate district to be able to help pay for things of this nature. I'd also suggest that there's another possibility that, as yet, uh, I don't think any of us have engaged, and that is the possibility that we could have organizations that have an interest in preserving open space and access to it, that might be interested in contributing, again, Dan, you mentioned, maybe people could chip in. Well, I personally think that it might be worth approaching folks like the Trustees of Reservations, the Autobond Society, the Essex County Green Belt, and others, because those groups in particular have just worked with us to purchase hundreds of acres known as Sagamore Hill in the communities of Hamilton and Winham and Essex. And we put together state funding for those things together with a municipal contribution to secure something that we would never have an opportunity to purchase otherwise, and there will be an enduring legacy for the people of the state. So, I can, I'm very sympathetic to the issue of balancing municipal budget. I, I hope you understand that we've been trying to do the very best we can to try to help with that, um, but as for this one, I would, I would share in your concern. I'm just thinking that perhaps it might make sense, if people are still interested in it, to say to that group of people, and I would be happy to work with them, then we'll work together to see if we can find a way that this could be realistic. If it's not, then I think prudently you could not move forward.
Right, and, and number one, I will go back and make it quick, if I had known this piece of paper was gonna be a week or two ago, and it wasn't gonna be all the town burden, it wouldn't have been a problem, I'm sure this board, it wouldn't have been a problem to look at it. I didn't even know it was out there, to be honest with you, I didn't, so.
Well, that's, and, and Mr. Chairman, that's part of the reason I came tonight, because Greg had mentioned to me that there may be members of the board that aren't familiar with the history of this, and, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, I've been around long enough that I was.
Right, right.
And so, I, I, I didn't, uh, mean to take anybody by surprise, but I did think it was important to let you know it's out there, but I also want to make sure you know what it is and what it isn't. So, it's an authorization, but it doesn't mean you will get that money, unless we get it released.
What's the timeline on this, and if, and if you, if you were in control, would you ma- make an offer to purchase that property contingent upon receiving this, uh, this bond?
Well.
And what would be the timeline on that, 'cause certainly the seller would want to know, hey, when?
There, there.
What are you waiting for? You know, how much time?
There are reasons that town council would probably advise you would not be best for us to discuss with me at this microphone and you at that table, but I would suggest in a hypothetical situation, that it, it wouldn't be unheard of for there to be structured a PNS contingent on the award of state funding. But again, I, I would defer to town council.
What was, what would be the, you know, sink or swim, uh, uh, duration on this? Would, would you, would you know it failed after, say, a year, or, or, or is it within the budget, you know?
Well, that's a good question, so, so let me go back just a little bit.
Does it get re-upped if it fails on one budget?
Yeah, well, so, so this is different than, than the usual state budget, because this is capital money, not operating funds.
Gotcha.
So, this, these bond bills generally last for between five and ten years. This one was passed in two thousand and fourteen, so realistically, we would expect all of its authorizations to continue on, at least until two thousand and nineteen. Every year, the administration chooses which of the things that are in all of these bond bills it's gonna spend money on.
So, it stays in the pipeline?
It does, and, and I wanted, Mike just made an important point, and I don't want to lose that point. It is not unusual, for purposes of budgeting, that an administration will say, out of that money, we'll give you so much this year, and so much next year, and so much in the third year, because that way, they can spread out how much impact they can have from the limited amount of money they can spend. So, it could be that we could try to get less money, but it could also be that we could say we'd like the full amount, but we'd like it over a period of years, and maybe we find other sources to help with the purchase, but we use some of the other money, over time, to be able to fund the construction and the design and all those things, and, and I agree, I think we do need to think carefully about the design, and I would also suggest that I would be hesitant to move forward with any design, unless we had an opportunity to show the public what we were thinking and have them have an opportunity to comment on it. This is a major project.
One thing that, I think back to what Ed said, was, there's an entrance coming out onto the bridge, and this can be changed, but they're showing one entrance coming in here on another person's piece of property, so you've gotta get deeded, right? And I'm sure that can all be taken care of, it's minor, but to go back one step, we really need to get a group in charge to start moving this forward. That's what we need to do.
Well, and I appreciate that.
And in a compact, in a group, like you say, there's history and what have you, and, and they need to go do their due diligence and bring it back, and hopefully you guys can maybe put something together for, you know, funding or whatever, maybe we don't get it all.
A committee, Bill?
A committee. I, I got a comment, um, love history, right? Mine is in history, loved it. So, throughout, when I lived in Groveland my, almost my whole life, right, so there was the Route ninety-seven project, right? And then there was the, the Elm Park project, and then there was the build, the, the bridge project, right? So, now we're talking about buying that land down there again and doing another project down there, tearing up the roads for the fourth or fifth time in the last fifteen, twenty years, that's bad government, again, right? Because you're constantly tearing up the same road to do same project in the same area. So, we go back to the dollar value, right, it would be six hundred thousand dollars, could be a hundred thousand dollars, could be no money, right? Still comes down to, that may cover the cost of buying that land, we still have to come up with the rest of it. Now, you gave some pretty good options that may work, that may not work, but it's still taxpayer money, either way you look at it. So, go get your committee, your program, your guard, whatever you want to call it, and see what the interest level is. I don't think that land's going anywhere, it's been there for years, it's landlocked, you can't put a business in there that's gonna thrive. I say you have plenty of time, find out how much money we're gonna get, and then go forward from there.
I don't necessarily disagree with that, I, I would point out, again, going back, as, as we are students of history, my recollection is that there was actually a payment from the Commonwealth to the owners of this property because it was diminished in value.
Right, yes, right.
Because of what already occurred there.
Right.
So, I would suggest that the, the number might even be higher if, if you didn't take that diminution of, of value in account. And I'm also, again.
You can still pay for it.
Right, but, but, I get it, but what I'm saying is that these are components of a whole. In other words, before the property was diminished in value, there, it might have been of greater value, part of that value was already paid for by the state.
Right.
So, now the remaining residual value, you know, the state may contribute more to it. But I would suggest this, and again, I, I want to be careful not to compromise the town's position, but the reason this is worded, not only for the purchase of the land, is to allow leverage. In other words, if, if we put a number in this bond bill and said the state will pay this amount of money for that piece of property, what do you think the price would be?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I, I'm suggesting that this money is for the project, and to allow us some ability to negotiate. But I agree with you, I, I think the very first step here needs to be to decide if there is interest in the community to even do this, for some of the non-economic things that you just suggested. If there is, then I think, because of the strategic location of this, because of how iconic it is and central to Elm Park and the center of town, then it would be worth having folks of good faith, if they're interested in putting in the time, to say, let's see if we could put something together. If it doesn't work, then I don't think you could move forward, because I don't think you could justifiably stand in front of the people in this community and say, we're gonna spend this money, after the conversation I just listened to about fifty dollars for more on a gr- piece of grass.
So, follow up to that, say, all this happens, wave a magic wand, all this happens, you know, there's unicorns and rainbows, fantastic, we have a parking lot down there. Now, is that just going to be for residents and for business work, or are we talking that businesses can park their business-owned trucks or equipment on that property as well? Is it gonna be set aside certain slots for businesses to park their trucks, or is it just going to be for residents and people coming downtown to use the facilities downtown?
Yeah, probably, and municipal lot, right?
Yeah, it did, yeah, and, and I'll, I'll let Greg, but I, I will just offer the fact that I don't know that I am the right person to opine on that, as to what you might want to do.
With the unicorns and rainbows, everything's happy now, right?
The, uh, if I can make you smile by the end of the meeting, I'll be happy, but I, I just want to point out that, I just want to point out that some of those decisions will be yours if this project were to move forward, they're not mine. And, and if you're gonna build a municipal facility, which it would be, would not be a state facility, some of those decisions would have to be made by you, I've not thought about those questions, I don't have the answer to those questions, it would be irresponsible for me to stand here and try to provide you with answers to things that I'm not qualified to answer.
Go ahead.
Just for the record, I mean, Denise up, uh, got me the copy of the Article twenty-one, uh, which was voted on until twenty-seven, two thousand and fifteen. That town meeting, town meeting voted, well, it was tabled, and it was quick, so it wasn't voted up, so table it is basically, you know.
Right.
It was Joe DeMore, one of the board of selectmen who put that article in, he pulled it, he tabled it, there was no vote. Well, it, 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 it was on, it was on the, uh, on the, on the warrant.
For sake of argument?
So, no, 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 let me get, get through this, you know, twenty-one thousand dollars, the project will provide funds for planning for improvement of Groveland Square, it would only be used if a purchase and sale could be negotiated on the property. But, 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 once the purchase and sale document is in place, planning for redevelopment of the parcel will begin and enable the town to decide on purchasing the parcel and how it would be used to improve access to the river, parking and open space in the square. Article, uh, submitted by the, uh, Community Preservation Committee and by Citizens' Petition, I mean, it was, it was tabled. So, this issue was brought up less than two years ago, little over a year ago, year and a month, and we couldn't get twenty-one thousand dollars for the plans, so, I mean, I was at that meeting, I mean, it went down in flames, so.
It did go down in flames, why do you say words like that? It was tabled by a member of the board.
And it was, I remember, the crowd just showed it, yeah, in favor of the table, and, and so, it, so, it, it wasn't like it was half and half and you had to do a recount and do a, get the decipal beat around, it went down in flames.
Let me ask you a question, honestly.
I was there.
Hold on, I know you were there.
It, it, part of it, I mean, we might not even at a quorum, 'cause the rail trail people want to know.
All right, let me ask you a question, if we held up this piece of paper before that meeting and we walked into town meeting, we said, well, we're ninety-nine percent positive, we're gonna get six hundred thousand bucks from the state, or whatever, they're committed to this project. I think, I think the town people would be, would, would want this, I don't think that, let me finish, I don't think.
It would have to be a contingency, if we get, you know, the free money from the state, which is our own money, it goes up to Santa Claus and comes back.
What I'm saying to you, I'm saying.
Or go to somebody else, like the City of April for a parking garage or a citizen center.
It could go to Lowell, or, you know, it's what you're Boston, it could end up.
Let me finish my point, if I walked into town meeting and said, we're looking for six hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, four hundred right now for this project, it's gonna be shot down because we don't, we don't have any way to find the money, but we have someone before us that, I'm reading between the line, if, if we can get someone together, a group, to move and, and work on this, maybe we have it out there, we're not gonna be coming looking for town people's money to do this.
Look, 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 Bill, if, if we can get the free money from the, from the state house, wonderful.
But, to me, I see this as, it's in the queue, it's just like our rail trail, we spent a half a million dollars on plans, and we're in a queue, and maybe we get funded in ten years, and maybe we get funded in twelve, and maybe it's sooner. To me, it's gambling with taxpayer money, because I could be dead by the time that trail's built. So, we have more pressing issues, I spent three months last year, in my first term, sitting in this chair, trying to get grass planted at an elementary school that hadn't had grass in thirty years. So, that's the stuff that irks me, we're gonna start new projects, we haven't finished the pines, we, we, we haven't finished the Baghdal Elementary School, that, that's gonna happen this summer, there's gonna be sprinklers and irrigation. We start fourteen projects and never finish, finish any of them, and that's what the people are irritated about.
All right.
That's what I hear all the time, everywhere I go, I can't walk around town without people saying, we ain't gonna finish what you started.
So, Mr. Chairman, let me make a couple of points, number one, I, I do not want to create any false expectations in terms of a guarantee of funding.
No, I understand, I completely understand.
Number two, uh, as I started at the outset, this. Number two, as I started at the outset, this is a decision that is for you.
Right.
Not for me. My job is to follow the dictates of the town. If you want me to find money for other things and work on those other things, whatever your priorities are, that's what I'm sworn to do, and that's what I will do. So it's not my decision whether or not to undertake a particular project.
Calm down for one second, let's go back to it.
Use the guys like me as in the legislature.
All right, well, just calm down for one second.
And so, and lastly, again, I'm suggesting that if there is a will in town to do this, and again, I think you all are better judges of that than I am.
Right, and the people, not to interrupt you, but the people of the town should be the ones that say they wanna move forward.
I with you completely.
And that's what I'm saying, a group could be formed, knowing what we have before us tonight. I can tell you, this board has already said, "We're not gonna use the town money, we don't have any," et cetera. We've had that conversation. But now we have something before us that we shouldn't even have to worry about. We should, Greg brought it before us, maybe he can make a conversation with some people. They can go do their due diligence, come back before us and say, "Okay, we want it, we don't want it." You've been here before us, we got this document from you, and we know there could be something down the pipeline.
And that's my ultimate point, is if you do choose to go forward with this, I would be happy to use best efforts to help, but I would help because it's a priority of the town.
I appreciate that.
If it's chosen to be a priority of the town.
Okay. All right, you know-
Yeah, I'm cool as a clam, I always am.
Sure, go ahead.
We could use you, we could use you on another subject, but I don't think it's on the agenda. But it has to do with the CPA funds and using them to make debt service payments on-
You know, many years ago-
Dan, hold on.
On a bond, I'd like to talk to you about that.
Sure, absolutely.
Many years ago-
All right, I'm gonna yield to Betty.
Okay.
When Jennifer Munson and Jane Holden and the Bridge and Square Committee decided to make Elm Park the beautiful place that it is now, I'm sure people sat and said, "How can we do it? Where's the money coming from?"
They did.
And we were fortunate that they worked very hard, that Senator Todd was in Boston, oh, a good friend of the late Governor Paul Salucci made sure we got a million-dollar grant. I think we have people in Boston that can help us. We'll find a way. I think Bill Doc, Don Graney, Greg Stock, Bob Guptill, myself, we can make an exploratory committee to find out what's going on.
Sure.
Let's not say no right away. It is an eyesore. It's been sitting there for a very long time.
Yep.
And those ladies didn't pull up their tent and go away. And then the monuments were there, and then the bridge came. We were going to Boston, I don't know how many of us, maybe twelve of us, often, to make this happen.
And that, and that, those ladies, it didn't take them a year. It took them probably three years or more. I can remember, they worked, they got shot down, they got up, they went, and they got it done. I can remember, they put a lot of work, design after design.
So before we say no, let's try.
I agree, I agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you have something you wanna say?
You know, I mean, if the state's gonna appropriate six hundred thousand, I mean, we could look at it, but it would be contingent.
Okay, let's leave it here.
You know, we, you know.
So, as a board, I'm gonna ask that we will listen to any offers that are brought before us on behalf of what Senator Todd and the, I'll call it the subcommittee, whatever, came before us tonight, and we will listen to them in the near future, and anything that can come before us to move this project forward, based on what we have in front of us tonight. Is the board on, everyone with that?
We can find OPM to buy it, sure, I'm all for it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think the people should know that we had talked before, and we didn't wanna add it to an agenda, because we didn't know that this, this bond, is it a bill?
It's a bond bill. Yeah, it's actually a bond.
It's a bill. It hasn't been voted, it's signed in the law, so it's a queue, effectively.
That's right.
So we didn't know this was, you know-
That's what I said.
In queue, so again, you know?
Right.
But again, we're cognizant of taxpayer burden here, and I'm not passing another bill on to anyone.
All right.
Bill, can I just, now, the other thing is Senator Todd did give you a statement where he said that you could try and put a purchase and sale agreement together, contingent on this money coming forward. So instead of just not making any attempt, maybe somebody should get back to the person that owns it, try and negotiate a reasonable price, and then offer the contingency in a purchase and sale, which would take it off the market at that point.
Can I ask something? Are we at liberty to ask about the property or not on camera? Do you know, is it, you know-
It's really nice, it's right down the center of town.
No, listen, is that twenty-one E done and all that?
Well, you can ask, in the purchase and sale, you would have to have that contingency, that it passes a twenty-one.
You don't know if that's been done.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that they've removed some tanks, they did some other site work.
It's been done.
Yeah, I think on the letter it said it's been cleaned.
Because in July of last year or something.
But if you were buying it, you still would do, you still would do a twenty-one E to make sure.
Yeah, we'd still do a twenty-one anyway.
I believe that's what the twenty-one thousand dollars was worth.
That was what it was for.
I could have read it.
I didn't say it, I didn't say it.
Didn't say that.
Ed Long ago talked.
I'm not directed at Don, I'm directed at you. Mr. Chairman, before we enter into a purchase and sales agreement or inquire about it, I think we need to, on behalf of the town, get an appraisal on the property.
I agree. Wouldn't be a bad idea.
And we had been, at one point, we had been working with a gentleman that, for some property that the town was gonna put out the bid. Maybe we can work with him and get an appraisal on that property. No?
We'd have to find money, that was two thousand dollars to get that last appraisal from him.
And we didn't sell, we didn't sell anything yet.
But you can usually-
I can answer to this.
Okay.
Bob wants it. I know that.
Of course he does, and you don't. Bob Guptill, nine fairview circle. So this is the article, the full article that you just read. This was the whole proposal that was presented to the Community Preservation Committee. It lays it all out in lavender. It was an update appraisal. It was to do the wetlands delineation and so forth, and to see, basically, conceptually, what could be done with the property before PNS was to be done. And that was the whole idea of the article.
Dollar amount?
Twenty-one thou, it was the twenty-one thousand.
No, no, we're talking about getting appraisal on what the land is worth.
But that was part of that proposal, was to get an appraisal done.
Correct, what I'm saying, what, how long ago was it done?
The original proposal was in two thousand and eight, the regional appraisal. Two thousand, and appraisal was completed in two thousand and eight by the CPC.
Two thousand and eight to now, that land has changed.
Right, but an update appraisal is significantly less than a full-blown, from scratch appraisal. I'm trying to blank where it is, oh, here it is, right here. Update of appraisal, three thousand dollars.
Right.
What was the property appraisal?
Two thousand wasn't bad.
It wasn't. This was to, it was to update the existing appraisal. But it was three thousand to take the original appraisal and update it to-
So where do we find three thousand dollars to do an appraisal?
Well, that's a CPA thing, it could be done, and that could be-
It's transfer from the highway department, right?
So there's an administrative account as part of the, as part of the Community Preservation Act.
Did you look into that?
There is, there is an administrative amount that's set aside, and that is for the, just these kind of purposes. Is that correct, am I stating that correctly?
Do we look into and get back to us on what it would cost for an appraisal?
Yes.
And we just had one done on Salem Street, and it was two thousand dollars for quite a bit of land, so maybe we might wanna call that guy.
See if we get a group discount.
Yeah, no. So, could we do that, you can get back to us?
Yeah, CPA would have to have a meeting.
Yep, I understand.
They're meeting this week, right?
There you go. We're meeting two days.
And again, back to Greg.
I get the ball already.
It sounds like-
Unforeseen.
Mrs. Grossky, Mrs. Grossky spoke. It sounds like you guys might have enough people to work on this again. Could you, could you?
We're all interested in working on this, that's the whole.
I'm trying to get to the point, is I'm trying to-
You know what the point is? The point is to acquire the property for open space in the best interest of the town.
I don't have the time to sit here.
It's been fourteen years, fourteen years.
Can you go to the podium, please? Can you go to the podium? Thank you. I understand, let me just finish what I wanna say. I'm trying to ask if a committee wants to get together. Maybe you can head it up, you seem like you're passionate about it.
I am.
Okay, I won't call it a committee, I've been criticized. We'll call it-
Test force.
Get a group together. See if we can't push this thing forward.
You are the group.
I don't have, I own my own business, I don't have time to put this all forward.
Then why are you sitting there?
It's a volunteer position, why aren't you up here?
I don't understand what you just, please refrain what you just said.
You're on the board, you're on the board of selectmen, right?
I'm here to try and run a meeting to turn around and get the people together to possibly put this forward. I'm not gonna go out here and, I'll sit here as a board and try helping get it forward, move it forward. That's what my job is, and that's what I'm doing sitting here.
Well, your job is also to take the best interests of the town into account, and make sure you acquire that property.
There's thousands of people out there.
Who says that's the best interest of the town, you?
You know?
You say buying, that's the best interest of the town?
Right.
Absolutely.
So, so what if I say it's not, and we're in disagreement?
Did you, did you listen to Senator Todd?
I've listened to Senator Todd, and respectfully, I can, you know, if Senator Todd can get us the money from the state-
Right, we'll show an interest in acquiring that money.
But here we are, you know, and again, did you listen to what I said? Because this town's been on a spending spree, and we don't finish projects, we start. So now, we're gonna start another one. I said that, I don't know how many, uh-
We don't have to go here, we don't have to go here.
No, but that's what the people in town want.
That wasn't the point.
I know.
It's not getting done.
I agree with you, Dan, I agree with you.
You're fed up with it.
Okay, I agree with you.
That's why I'm sitting here.
Okay.
Let me tell ya.
Number one, and I'm not being wise when I say this, I understand you're frustrated, you look frustrated. Take it down a notch, please, for me, and understand, I'm not here trying to throw a wrench into this. Senator Todd took his time to come out, the past selectman. I'm here trying to work it out. I've already said, I'll say it again, there's something here. We have a document that's been put before us tonight, we have something. I asked these gentlemen, can you possibly find the money to pay for it? They said yes. I was trying to now turn around and say, "We need some people to put this together and start moving with it." I can't, I have my own business.
It sounds like we've had that group for years, and nothing's been resolved. Why do you keep saying form a group, and when we'll revisit it, we've been, this has been addressed, this has been brought forward to the attention of the-
I don't know, that's, tonight's the first night I saw this. Anyone else on this board saw this?
No.
Stayed there for about twenty seconds.
Right, I'm not speaking directly about that document. The point is simply this.
I've only been a selectman for two years.
I'm not pointing blame, I'm just stating the fact, that that bridge, we knew that that was gonna be built ten years prior, and no one could make an effort to see that that gas station wasn't there at the end of that.
Can I just say something? I-
And then add two years.
Let me just-
I wasn't a part of the project.
So, okay.
We're not pointing fingers.
Number one, to be fair, my recollection is, and I stand to be corrected, that at one point, there was an Elm Park committee.
Yep.
And that committee was largely the one that leveraged us to be able to get the money.
Yep, you're right.
But my understanding was also that that committee ceased to exist or became inactive for two reasons. One, was that the project was completed, the rest of the project. And two, I don't recall this parcel was for sale. In fact, there have been questions about whether it ever would be for sale.
Well, the problem that I understood, and, the problem that I understood was, the property we're talking about was, couldn't, the price couldn't get negotiated with the state. It was too much money, and maybe I'm wrong, they couldn't acquire for the, what they wanted to acquire. And it got to the point where they said, "Well, we're gonna take this by eminent domain." Tough. Now the property's worth less, because the front door's gone, so it's not worth what we all think it's worth. So what I'm saying, we're gonna take up any more time tonight, the property is kinda landlocked. It is, you gotta go over someone's property to get into there, okay? It has a few problems, it's probably not worth what it is. We have a document in front of us, it's presented tonight, I think we should move forward. And again, I won't say committee, I won't say whatever. I think if we can find some people that wanna move it forward, I think that's where we need to go. I'm for it. I'm not for spending taxpayers' money, I'm not.
The other thing is, you know, you want parking over there, maybe you need parking, but it's at an intersection. Is that really the right space to be pulling out into traffic right at that bridge? I mean, it, it just doesn't even look like a good spot for a parking spot. And then what's gonna happen to the post office, is that part of the parcel? So what happens to our post office? We don't have a post office anymore? I mean, what happens there, anyone?
The lease is almost up anyway.
What happens to the post office? And then, you know, everything on my address is gonna be towards town.
I'm sure we'll end up with a post office.
I don't know.
To take that as open space is the whole objective, right?
Sir, you didn't give your name and who you are.
Scott Picuzzo, I live in Groveland Commons, I lived here most of my life.
Mr. Chairman, I think you've set the ball in motion, you've asked a couple of people to see if we could get CPA money for a, an appraisal. I think that would be the first step. Let's see what the property is worth, we have the possibility of getting six hundred thousand. The first, the first step is an appraisal.
Right.
It seems like everybody's on board that they're into it. It's now or never with this. I mean, it's been going on for fourteen years, and the thing is still sitting there. It's like, it sounds like, from according to Senator Todd, this is it. Take an interest and get it done.
It sounds like it. Did you, did you hear what he said?
I did hear what he said.
To six hundred.
I did hear what he said.
Possibly.
I did hear what he said.
We can't make a decision tonight? We can't buy, we can't buy property on wish-
It just, it just doesn't sound like the board is in the interest of-
No, because we're all conservative, we don't wanna just spend money we don't have. Or spend money that we think we're gonna have. I may get paid next week, I'm not gonna go buy it on my own.
Everyone, hold on. Before tonight, before, before tonight's meeting, we had no way, we had no idea, we have, we have no money to do this. Now we have it in front of us again, okay? We have this document here.
Okay.
So we can work with it, okay?
Did you guys phone Elizabeth Warren, by the way?
I hope so.
Ted Kennedy, anybody?
So, go ahead, Bill.
Senator Todd, can you tell me?
Senator Tarr, can you tell me?
Wait, like, someone's talking.
Excuse me.
Sorry, yeah, I apologize for my, I, you know, well, first.
I try to be respectful when other people are talking, so I'd appreciate the same. Um, Senator Tarr, could you tell me, what kind of act of God, or, 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 what would be necessary to get this six hundred thousand dollars released, like, tomorrow?
I appreciate the question, and so, first of all, the only people that can choose to release this money are the administration. Generally, the way that that would work is, the Secretary of Administration and Finance, and in this case, probably the Secretary of Environmental Affairs would make a recommendation to the governor, that this be included in a capital spending plan. And that's a problem because of the timing, right? So, because they just did the capital spending plan. So they'd have to either seek to amend it, or include it in next year's capital spending plan, but that's what would need to happen.
Okay, what kind of act of God would it take to get it amended this year?
It's not unheard of, but it would be a heavy lift.
So, reasonably, we couldn't expect this money until next year?
That could be the case.
So, the town would have to foot the bill, initially, we'd have to front the money, is what you're saying? And then, hope that we could get all of our investment back through this one little sentence?
I don't know that that's what I'm suggesting at all. What I'm suggesting is that it's worth exploring, to see if you could use various sources of funding to build or accomplish this.
And I agree with you a hundred percent, it's the timing now that I'm concerned with.
And, and I agree with you, and I'm not suggesting that the town contemplate spending six hundred thousand dollars, because, again, from my understanding, just from being here tonight, that I don't think that would be a prudent thing to do. So what I'm suggesting is that, if the town wants to pursue looking at this project, it would make sense to have a group look at financial options, to see if it could be feasible. And, and again, I don't know what kind of P and S you might entertain, I, I don't know what position the property owner is in, in terms of being able to sell this piece of land. They, they might be willing to engage in a long P and S, I'm not sure, but I don't wanna speculate about that here.
But now, you suggest a committee, we've already had some pushing back and forth about, well, we've already had committees, we've already talked about this, we've already done this, we've already done that. Now we go back to a committee, how many more committees do we need before we just settle the argument and move on?
You know what the, the, the starting po, this, Bill, is, the starting point is, is what that is worth.
I agree.
That's the starting point. Now, we had something go before town meeting, that was twenty-one thousand bucks, it got tabled, but you know something? Two thousand, which I just spent on Salem Street, oh, we spent, not me, sorry, the town, on Salem Street, it wasn't bad. But spent two thousand dollars to see what this is worth, we might come back, we might, they might come back in a crazy number, or it could be a good number. If it's a good number, now we go the next step, that's all I'm saying. I mean, if you had to spend, if you had to spend three, that was someone just said a minute ago, at least we now, we get the starting point. I don't think we're gonna have, we're gonna find town money to do it, I agree, I agree with Dan and everyone else, but yet, if Senator Tarr's here before us, and, you know, if, if it gets pushed off to next year, we go to a P and S, if we got to that point, then we, we say to her, hey, listen, we might not be able to buy it till next year, and she might just say, forget it, I'm not interested, I'm going someplace else. End of story, it's done and over with.
I, I do just, I, with your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, I just do wanna make one point, a, and that is, in responsibility, your, your, your point about the committees that have come and gone. The committee that I worked with, that was the Elm Park Committee, it was in existence for a period of time, and it worked to produce over a million dollars in state funding for Elm Park. It ceased to operate because that project was done. I don't believe there was ever a committee specifically on this piece of it. It might have been considered by the other committee, but essentially, there were too many unknowns about it, and I don't think that committee's been active in a while. Again, there are people here that were on it, that could suggest, but, but I would point out, that it was that committee that actually did work successfully, with the legislative delegation and with the administration, to find a significant amount of money, to do something I don't think the town would have ever been able to afford otherwise.
Right, and the, and the, and the problem is, is, the problem is, is, you gotta be able to get a passionate committee.
Yeah.
To be able to do it.
I agree.
And that's, and that's what I've been saying all night, is you sat here and heard about fifty dollar lawn mowing jobs, you gotta get a passionate committee to do the job, and that's it. We can't do it all.
I couldn't agree more, a, and again.
If you have a passionate committee that works well together, it gets done, you get a million bucks.
I, I would only offer you the suggestion. That if people that are passionate about doing this, you charge them with doing it.
Yep.
And say, see what you can come up with, and, and, that would be my approach.
Yep.
Mr. Stark, real quick question. I guess you know the buyer better than anyone. How, how, how do you feel about?
Buyer?
Uh, the seller, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's been a long day, and a long night. You know the seller, you think that she would be amenable, or they would be amenable to possibly waiting a year, before this all, you know, pans out?
I'll tell you what I know, okay? I, I don't know her very well, I know her fairly well. I've become her acquaintance through business, and that's it. She's become, believe it or not, to like me.
Why not?
That's, that's what I, I had talked to her again, a year or so ago, about giving the town the first offer, just because I thought it was the right thing to do. And, she's the one who called me, she's called me on several occasions. You know, I know that in her point, in her life right now, she wants to sell. She's a motivated seller, that's what I'm telling you.
Okay, so, being her friend.
I'm not her friend, I'm, I'm acquaintance.
Whatever you wanna call it, maybe the phone call could be, we had a little discussion in town hall the other night, would you be, consider a long-term agreement? And if she says, I'm not ready, no, don't waste our time. I mean, don't waste the time, you mean? We know it's gonna be a year, probably, anyway, before we could do it.
Anything you want me to ask?
I, I think that would be a good starting point, then if we get, okay, there, now we go to, we go and get the, the land.
Appraisal.
Appraisal, right? Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just to interject, a couple of meetings ago, we got a letter from her. With a, she wanted to sell it to the town.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe the proper way to do it would be, to return letter to her, say that we're, we're going to, in, we'll be in the process of getting an appraisal on the property. We're into, continue, we may be interested, but we want an appraisal.
Right, but what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, if we have the conversation to see if she wants to go with that long-term agreement, we wouldn't have to spend the three thousand dollars. If she comes back and says, no, I'm not gonna wait a year, 'cause this is gonna take a year, so we don't go and wait a year, if she, if she's willing to, we'll wait the year, we'll spend the money, get the appraisal. But if she's not willing to wait a year, then what's the sense of our, it, it could be a simple confirmation, you get what I'm saying?
The point becomes moot.
You know what I'm saying, Ed?
Uh, yes, but it's been, it's been sitting there, I don't see anybody jumping off the shelf to purchase that.
No, 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 I agree with you a hundred percent, but I'm saying, if, if, if Greg can give her a call, and, and she says, no, I really wanna have a quick sale done over with.
I, I just think that we, we should tell her that, yeah, we may be interested, we want an appraisal, we're gonna get an appraisal first.
I mean, I, I do find it a little strange that, you know, she has sent a letter to you, and, and she was just mentioning it to me, that I found it a little strange that the, that the board of selectmen have not responded to my letter.
Well, that's because we didn't have any money or anything to do with it, we knew looking at it.
Well, out of a, a courtesy or something, some, some kind of a.
I saw it last night, when I was looking at the notes, I didn't see it before.
I didn't see a letter before either.
First time I saw this letter was.
A month ago, anyway.
Yeah, it was correspondence about a month ago.
That's a problem.
But, we, we shouldn't be asking him to follow up with that.
We'll go back to this room, send her a letter back, tell her that, we had Senator Tarr before us, could be some money there, it could be a long-term agreement. Are you interested in doing it? Simple as that, done and over with, and we'll just wait to see what happens.
Well, you know, I'd just like to say that, again, I was here to tell you the history of this.
Yep.
And here to also show you the passion of this town.
Mm-hmm.
For this, this isn't something that just happened.
Right.
Tonight.
Nope.
And, um.
Okay.
I, I think you'll find that there'd be a lot of people in town that are gonna be passionate about this, this is a very positive thing for the whole town.
If she, if this lady doesn't wanna go the long term.
Clearly, it's, it's the way in which you word a letter to a, to a seller, how they're gonna react, so be very careful.
I was gonna try and have you do it.
Does she have a broker?
I would assume so.
There was a sign up there for a while.
Again, I'm, I'm, I'm here as a citizen, okay? I'm, I'm here. Well, the letter was, was written to the town.
No one returned my phone calls.
So, I mean, if, if there's a sign on the bill, then you call the agent, I mean, that's the.
Yeah, I think I called three or four times.
That's the protocol.
She was giving you first refusal, she sent you a letter for first refusal, that's what she sent you, and.
So, if we have the letter.
She just mentioned in passing to me that the board has done nothing, what's happened? It's now been a month, so, I, I haven't talked to her, I, I don't know, but.
So you don't wanna talk to her, but yet.
I, I, I have no problem talking to her, but, you know.
Oh, you just made a statement, you worry about how the letter's gonna get written, that's why I was trying to put it.
Well, I, I mean, I clearly think it's the right thing to do, to, to have the board respond to the letter that was sent.
All right, we're gonna respond to the letter.
But it should be in a positive fashion, is what I'm saying.
Well, thanks.
All right.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm running my town council for four thousand dollars.
No, that's okay.
I, I, and I think we should not even, not put in a letter that we had the senator here, that's gonna jack up the price if she thinks that the state's gonna kick in some money. It's gonna go through the roof, and this six hundred thousand isn't gonna be anywhere as close. Can you get us a million?
So, we're gonna take the center out of the letter, and we're gonna say that we had conversation, there could be some state funding available.
No, I wouldn't even say that, I'd say you're in.
But the point I'm trying to, oh, this is ridiculous. What I'm trying to say is, this lady wanna wait a year? We talk about something over and over, is she willing to wait a year?
Is she willing to wait to find out if we can get that long money?
That's all we wanna find out.
Right there, is she willing to wait?
Did she put her phone over there?
That's all, you know, near talk.
If we get this money, then it seems like.
No, she didn't. I know.
Can't get it, then we're back to, you know, financing and everything else.
If she's not willing to wait a timeline, it isn't worth pursuing it, that's all I'm saying.
The broker that didn't return my phone calls last year.
All right, well, I'm gonna shut this off, it's ten o'clock.
Yeah, it's time to go home.
Thank you, we're gonna put the letter out, we'll get you the response, as soon as we can, can you please forward it to me, Denise, and the board? Get the letter, once you get a response, get it right out to us as soon as possible. Okay.
Just ask, how is this committee gonna get into the form, is how you're gonna.
I don't know yet, we're gonna wait and find out if this works. Yep.
If there's no interest on her side, you know, you're just wasting your time.
You volunteer, do head that, head that up. What's that? No, we need a good chairman.
Okay, we're moving on late.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're going an hour late, but anyway, we have the video renovation update.
No, we already did.
Sorry, it took so long to get you guys in.
No problem.
Hopefully this goes smooth and the rest of the night's been, but.
I don't wanna talk to you, 'cause I got three million dollars. People imply that, you know, what do we get elected for?
I know.
I left the fourth inning, and my kid's standing on second base over there, a little game, to come here to argue over grass, and so it tips me off, just to let you know, tips me off.
And I don't blame you, but you know, no, it takes me off.
Just 'cause they disagree with us, my heart's in the right place, I live here too, and I didn't live here for three generations. If you move in here today, you got the same rights as the guy who was born here.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Tell you that.
I've been here for forty years, that's.
All right, these guys wanna talk, can you guys, can you guys leave the room so we can get the next people in? Thank you. Okay, so. Vito, try it again.
Good evening, um, Daniel, Daniel Briscoe and Tracy Guilford, both Groveland residents, um, we're here on behalf of the Groveland Firefighters Association. We brought forward a project to the Community Preservation Committee at their meeting, um, approximately three years ago, to refurbish and make improvements to the, to the area out front that houses a wonderful historic artifact for this town. We are just kind of curious as to, if there's anything we can do to help with the, with the project, because it's, it was approved three years ago at town meeting. And, what the holdup is, I guess. We're just looking, is there anything we can do to help, I've had conversations with the building inspector. He, he seems to be of the opinion that he's okay with the project, um, I had heard that there was some problems with him, but I talked to him today, he's okay with the project. Um, is there anything we can do to help move the process forward?
Do you wanna bring him up on what you know on your behalf?
Uh, so my issues are, I just can't get a meeting with Doug Mund. So, there were questions on the drawings he gave me, um, there's items in the drawings that we were going to remove before it went out to bid, because, um, for the thirty-four thousand dollars, there's no way we're gonna get everything done, and I've asked him to separate some of the items out, so that we can put it out to bid and get the construction done first. Um, we, every time we have a meeting, I get an email saying he's delayed another two weeks, another three weeks. I will re-follow up with the building inspector, 'cause he did have issues, him and I spoke, he had issues with the sprinkler system being installed, because this building does not have a sprinkler system, and the plans call for a sprinkler system being installed, and he had questions with that, so him and I were gonna meet with Doug Mund. And that's really what the issue is, is I just can't get him in here to meet and go through the plans with me.
So, did you say the figure was thirty-four thousand?
I, I, I think, I, I think that's roughly what it was.
Mike, do you remember, I think it was closer to sixty?
No.
Oh, okay, I stand corrected.
And, and so, we.
Those were three to four year ago prices.
Right, and we knew we weren't gonna be able to get delighted display cases with this money, we weren't gonna get the rotating platform, we weren't gonna get.
So our biggest concern is, the UV damage to the artifact, and conditioning the space, and getting a sprinkler, 'cause we've heard some value ranges on that, from a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand. So, you know, it's a, it's a substantial item.
So, so Doug is, has not been in contact with you as of?
Oh, he has, him and I are in constant contact, he's just not in the state, ever.
Yeah, but can't some of the problems be solved by email or phone calls, so it can be put out to bid? You know, I, I, with, with everything, you know, I keep being told by people, this is such a small project, you know, why is it taking over three years to do? And I'm, uh, you know, as we say, we're coming respectfully before the board to find out what we need to do, to see this move forward, for the preservation of the veto. So what do we need to do, as an organization, to move this forward?
I need plans for a construction of that room without all of the extras, 'cause that would really be phase one, 'cause I think that's all the thirty-five thousand that's gonna cover.
No display, you know, it's just the display of the veto, is what needs to be done.
Taking out the windows, putting brick walls, putting the HVAC system in, putting a sprinkler system in, um, if that's really the priorities, then I need drawings that show that that's the priorities, because I can't, with the drawings I have, I can't go out to bid, 'cause it has all these other things included into it.
Can I just say something? I've been around for a few years, and this thing keeps coming up, and coming up, and coming up, and coming up, and I understand her frustration, because the architect has moved out of state, he's gone to Georgia, he no longer lives here. I truly think, and I, and I think I had this conversation with Denise, it might be time we find a new architect or someone different, because we're not getting the answers. And listen, I'm not criticizing, he was doing this for free, as far as I understood, and he was doing it out of the goodness of his heart. I mean, if we wanna get this thing moving, do we find a group of guys or contractors, I don't know, I mean, thirty-five thousand's not gonna get a lot. You guys, Dan, you're in the construction business, it's not gonna get us a lot, thirty-five.
Can you ask one of the schools to draw up plans?
Well, plans are already drawn up, all we have to do is have the, the display cases removed, so, 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 let, let me shoot an email to Doug, and, and say, this is what we need.
More than just a display case, isn't it?
Well, I mean, there were still questions, like I said, the sprinkler system, I'll, I'll follow back up with Sam tomorrow, 'cause he was concerned about the cost of tying in, that it had to come from the street, because we don't have sprinklers in here to tie into, um, it talks about removing one set of doors and relocating another set of doors. Doesn't say where I'm relocating another set of doors.
I think the intent of that was to replace the doors of, at the fire station that were rotting.
Okay.
There's, there's two sets of doors there, one was gonna get removed, and it's in good conditions, because it's been indoors its whole life. We have, you can see outside from the fire station, and it's the same basic door. Um, so the idea was to try to reuse it over there to save the cost of another door.
Okay.
Do you think, I, I don't know, I mean, do you think that you guys could sit down with Denise at one point, and you guys?
Sure, I think, I think the biggest thing is to get in touch with Doug, if he, we need to find out if he truly doesn't have time to complete this, maybe he can point us in the direction of somebody that does.
Somebody locally who can take over for him.
Right, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I agree with you, it's time to cut ties with Doug, uh, he's, he's moved out of state, uh, he's, he's no longer here. I know you can do things through email, et cetera, et cetera, but three years is way too long, and it's becoming embarrassing. It, you know, when you get something for nothing, generally that's.
It wasn't for nothing, we did pay him, and, and just because, you know, it, it is what it is, we have to completely air the, the whole story. It, it's not completely Doug, you know, it originally, you know, it was, finance director was leaving. And then, a new finance director came in, and so there was no time to discuss it when Doug was available. So you can't pin this completely on Doug, it, it's erroneous, and I won't allow that to happen, you know, because.
This has been brought, I, I've sat here, uh, for, for a little, a year, and this is probably the third or fourth time that this has been brought up. It's, it's time to say, look, we, we gotta get somebody else to head up the project.
But, but that's what we needed to, you know, i- it's like, if we know this is what has to be answered.
So why don't.
We can get the questions answered, but I need the questions from Denise, you know, these are what we want to know answers for, so it can go out to bid.
So can we develop a quick punch list for these guys, that they, you can send them and say, here's the punch list you need to complete?
So that we can follow up with Doug, and say to Doug.
It's on their, it's in their court, if they can't follow up.
We, we don't mind doing that, it was originally, we brought the project forward, so it, you know, it kind of got out of our hands once it got approved, um, but, I think we owe Doug at least.
The courtesy of.
I just wanna follow up with him, if, you know, and just say straight out, if you don't have the time to do this, we need to, we need to figure out another.
We'd like a recommendation.
Get it done.
Go ahead, Dan.
How, how much are we short from the original plans that were approved, this is again, this was three years ago, right?
Yeah.
Three years ago.
Yeah, this is three years ago at town meeting.
It was the same meeting, Senate Street was bought, right? The, the, the spending town meeting, but I voted for this. You gotta preserve history, but it was thirty-eight thousand, the more you, you wait, things go up.
Yeah.
So are we short, should we be going back to CPA and supplementing five grand, two grand, two grand, I mean.
Do we even know where we're short?
Here's the thing, if you low, if you put a low number through, more than likely, it gets approved. The way to kill a project is make it too expensive, so you might have put it in low, and then it's not feasible, it's not realistic, what's a real number on getting it done the way it ought to be? Do we need, you say, next to what, the display case, don't we wanna see it displayed, I mean?
No, display case is for, for memorabilia, fire department.
An optimized list of the items remaining in order to, to be able to do that, and right now, she can't get.
Right, so I haven't, I haven't put it out to bid as it was, because I was told when I first started that that money will never cover all of the items that are needed.
Thirty-five thousand's not gonna get you.
And I'll be honest with you.
I don't know, I don't know.
But I'll be honest with you, Dan, the last five CPA projects that have gone out to bid, we've rejected because they've all come in overbid. And I hate spending money on advertising and doing this, to reject a bid, and, 'cause it's chipping away at the project costs.
Realistic numbers to begin with.
Right, because prevailing wage doesn't come into estimates and things like that, so when it goes out to bid, unfortunately, all of the figures from CPA lately have been under what's required.
Originally, when we, when we did the.
Who's in the know, is it really a fifty thousand dollar project?
When we did the plan with Doug, Doug supplied the construction numbers, he's familiar with, he does a lot of museum work and things like that.
What's a real number?
He supplied the numbers for the estimated construction cost.
Can, can you guys leave here tonight? Make the call to Doug.
Yep.
Listen, sometimes I hate telling people no, maybe he can't, like you said, maybe he just doesn't have the time, who knows? Get the call into him, find out what he truly, if he can do it, he can't do it, or whatever, and then get back to Denise, and hopefully in the interim, you can come up with a list, like Bill said, what do you need, what answer, or maybe you wanna do it before, and they have the conversation, let them have the conversation with him, say, I need this, this, and this answered, let them get the answers.
Well, I think the first thing would be is for you to come up with a priority list of what is the priority that you need, and then have him associate a cost with that. Because if those three things or four things are kinda gonna take that thirty-eight thousand dollars, then obviously, that's what we do first. Um, if he honestly thinks with prevailing wage, take it into consideration, that we'll get that construction work, a rotating table, automated blinds in the windows, display cases, all the HVAC, all of that stuff, which I just don't see how we would do it all in thirty-eight thousand. So that's what I really need, is what your priority list is, and then I'll put together my questions on the specs that I have.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, certainly the main priority is conditioning the space. Okay, yeah, certainly the main priority is conditioning the space, replacing the flooring that has mold and, and reducing the UV damage to the-
Probably the UV would be arguably the first thing.
Right, well, and the conditioned space and-
Yeah, because the, the heat in there, it's like, uh, it's like-
So get, get, get the list together as soon as you can.
Yeah.
Have the conversation with Doug and then get together with Denise and hopefully the next time we meet, we can get this thing moving.
All right.
Thank you, we appreciate your time and all you do. Thank you.
Okay, so, moving on. We have the minutes, both of the board, the minutes from the May third, two thousand sixteen meeting. Did everyone read them?
Yes.
Give them?
Yes.
Could be in order.
Make a motion to accept-
I'll make a motion. Second?
Second, any further discussion? Okay, in favor, okay, all in favor? Okay, good. All right, we have a one-day liquor license for the graduation party at the V C Park on June fourth between the hours of one and five P M. Detail officer required on the premises. So can I get a motion to accept the one-day liquor license?
Yes, I'll make the motion with the certificate of liability looks to be up to date this time.
That's what you wanna change, right?
Yes, okay.
No other further discussion? Do we have a second, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded, any other further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, good, all right. We have to authorize the relocation of polls from May sixteenth, public hearing. A roll call vote was made, but there was no motion or vote taken.
Yeah, so this is just to clarify your last meeting during the public hearing. A roll call was taken, but there was no vote or motion actually made to relocate, to authorize relocating the polls. So this is just to actually clarify that you did vote to do that. So if you could just vote to actually authorize that.
Can we vote to authorize the-
We did.
No. All, all in front of your house.
Okay, so can we get a, I wanted to say, any further discussion? And can we get a vote?
Well, can you make a, someone make a motion?
I thought we already did that and we just didn't get to that point.
No, no, you need to still, you made a roll call, but there was no motion.
So can we get a motion to-
Authorize-
Authorize the relocation of the polls from the May sixteenth public hearing.
Motion to relocation, motion to authorize the relocation of the polls from the May sixteenth public hearing.
Okay, seconded? Seconded?
Bill just did.
All in favor?
Do we need a roll call or just a?
You already have a roll call.
I'm removing myself in a minute.
All right, moving on. And does anyone have anything on the old business?
That would, that would constitute what happened at September.
I had a, I had a few quick things. Okay, go ahead, real quick.
Melissa Lawless, Nine Governors Road. Denise and I had a conversation at a prior meeting about my street, it beat a dead horse. Just curious, did it go out to bid, is it getting done?
To be honest, I don't know, I'd have to talk to the water department, I really haven't checked in on it since the last time.
Water department said it goes to the highway department, it was, they said mid-June. I'm only asking because here's, here's the thing, I have a camper. And if the road's closed, it's gonna be a problem to get my camper in and out.
I, I don't, I haven't checked in on it since the last time we talked at the meeting. I honestly don't know what's going on with it.
Okay.
So I can check in and find out.
Yeah, you said that last time.
That time, they said it was gonna be June, right after school got out, that's the last update I had. So I can check and see if there's any change to that. I haven't heard anything, but again, I'm not involved in that, it's between the water and the highway department, it's their project, so.
Okay.
Maybe write a letter to the, wrote commissioner. And write a letter to the water commissioner. Trust me.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, so under old business, I found the top line.
It doesn't matter, as long as your signatures are on there.
That's all right.
That's fine.
Okay, so under old business-
No, you did, this is Dan's signature.
Real quick, the Bagwell School well went out to bid and we had one bid, right Denise?
Yep, we had one bid, it was a, a award to contract. I have not heard back from the awarding party to see if they've accepted our contract in terms of the proposal.
Okay.
Offhand, you know offhand what the bid was?
It was Vieira Artisan Well.
No, the dollar amount.
Forty-six thousand five hundred.
For a well?
The well itself was only twenty-four thousand, the pump was twenty-six-
The well is a well, I mean-
It was twenty-six thousand for the pump and-
When you, when that went out the bid, when that went out the bid, was there a gallon per minute that was-
Fifty to seventy, yeah.
Yes, Bill put, Bill put the specs, Bill and I put the specs together, we had a map, we had it all drawn out. Yes, five to six hundred feet is the estimated depth we need.
No, the role commissioner said he would mow it once the project was done.
So who, okay, who's gonna- Who's gonna mow the lawn behind Bag now currently, not, before the project?
I think they maintain it, don't they?
Who?
I think the school maintains.
They won't maintain it because it's too rough and it's out of-
Yeah, so the problem is that, you know, I got a letter from someone saying that the teachers are gonna go out and mow the lawn.
They won't mow it, the, the school department will not mow the lawn because it's not, it ruins their lawnmowers, they won't mow it. They'll mow the front, they're not mowing the back. It's our responsibility because it's so out of condition.
Town's responsibility.
Town's responsibility, that's what they're saying.
And who does that fall through?
The highway, I don't know, whoever mows grass, I'm not gonna say.
Whoever mows grass.
Just checking.
There you go, whoever sent me that email, that's your answer.
Well, I'm sorry, I mean, I don't know who would-
I told him I'd bring it up.
Okay.
I brought it up. It's on full circle in three hours.
Right, so moving forward, in our last meeting, we had a discussion about the Shanahan Field bathrooms. I did have a conversation with Steve Merrill. He informed me that they're being unlocked and used every weekend and that he said that the plumbing problem, a thousand dollars was gonna be taken care of by the builder and possibly a thousand from a different committee to make the updates.
No, from community, community preservation is meeting to discuss it. I will say, we don't support use of the bathrooms because they're not permitted. So, the town has not issued permits on those bathrooms.
I'm just giving an update, that's all I'm doing.
They are being utilized, but they are not permitted at the moment. The, um, the, the, why, plumbing inspector and the building inspector have been in there, they've made a list. They don't expect it to be that significant with changes. There's a few things here, there, a couple of things are very minor, easy fixes. I'm still waiting on whether or not we need to replace the sinks because they don't believe the sinks were made for hot water and if we have to put in a hot water heater, we may have to replace the sinks as well. But they don't think it's gonna be significant changes.
Okay, Mike, you have something you wanna say on behalf of us?
Well, you know, tomorrow night, I, at your request, I scheduled a CPC meeting so we can request more funds to get that bathroom useful, but- Thursday, sorry. But I need to know a number. Already I have one member of the CPC who's not happy about it. And I really don't wanna go in there with no information and just say we need X dollars without really knowing what it's for. So I'd like some kind of request or something, maybe helpful. Yeah, yeah, but what, what is it for, you know? Because I, because I'm gonna get pushback.
I heard that, and I'm only gonna say what I heard, I don't know if Steve wants to get, but I'll say what I had a conversation was that hot water tank in the middle of the building, they need a hot water tank for the, possibly for the hand washing. Wasn't gonna be a big deal, the PVC PEX pipe could be taken out, may have to run a copper line in. Number that I had been verbally told to me, maybe around a couple thousand dollars, a thousand from possibly the builder, a thousand from another committee. And that's what was told to me.
I thought last time we were here it was up like about two thousand dollars.
As like you said, a thousand and a thousand.
So you don't need any money from CPA?
The builder was gonna kick in a thousand.
So, I, I talked to a couple of you about this. Enough's enough, all right? This was the building inspector's mistake because both building inspectors had the building plans prior to this whole system. I fall this on, completely on the building inspectors for not doing their due diligence. This is a public building, so this means it's the town's responsibility. There's very minor work that needs to be done. The minor work that needs to be done is to make it state, mass state code compliant. Talking about PVC versus copper, whatever. Denise and I have, on a regular basis, on a weekly basis, we've asked for a detailed list and then we can go from there. But we have not received it to date. So you need to go back to your building inspector and get that list, that's it. And then we can't give you a number until we get that because that's the person that's making the statement. This is internationally, this is actually, the building is suitable. This state, of course, it isn't because this state has crazy restrictions on just stupid little things. Because PVC anywhere else in the world is acceptable in these places. So that's where we need, that's where we're headed, that's the only thing. How much work, based on my experience, it's gonna be under three grand. But that's not my, I'm still not the person that's making the decisions on those things. And just, just so everybody knows, on the ADA, ADA compliance, I made sure that building was ADA compliant. She saw the emails from it, Denise Art. The only one that didn't was the selectmen in the previous group, which I don't think any of you were on that group, right? They told us what number we could use, they cut down the bill. Bill, you were on the committee when I, when I went in there for the-
Capital improvements.
Capital improvements. I came in and asked you for a hundred ninety thousand dollars. The hundred ninety thousand dollars was for a parking lot and so many other things. They took away and they needled and picked and knit and picked and knit and picked. And finally, so they don't really wanna go for the bathrooms, but they'll agree to just do the bathrooms. So that's where we stand. We need to get this done, the bathrooms are open, I talked to, I talked to the building inspector, there is no occupancy permit. They're perfectly functional, there's no problems to them, so we can do this in time. All right, it's not a rush to do it, because it's, they're perfectly legitimate, the, the seasons, we're going into warm, not in cold. So we've got till November to really do these changes. But we, we need to find that number and the building inspector is the one that needs to do it.
Who needled and picked, was it the board of selectmen?
It was the board of select, the board of selectmen nitpicked, because you guys were on board with the big number because you guys wanted a parking lot and everything else, but we couldn't even go any further, we got-
It's the same three that were in here tonight trying to buy a gas station. Let me just set that right. I want a gas station, but not, not important.
I, I wouldn't say they would say it was, wasn't important, but they just, they had their priorities, but that was where we started, yep.
And I'm not trying to, again, does Sam have the ability to sit there and say it needs this, this, and this? Or he has to go to the plumber?
Yeah, so Sam needed the, so, so last Thursday or Friday, I think he went in with the plumbing inspector.
Yep.
The electrical inspector was supposed to get the key and go in today and see what he needed, if anything. So that's what Sam was waiting on, was the electrical inspector's list so that he could then say-
Would Sam actually be able to put a number together to tell these guys?
I don't know if he'll give us a number.
We just need to get us a punch list and we'll work from there. The punch list is what we need, if we don't have a punch list, we cannot go with anything. I can turn around to the plumbing guy that we had and say, what's this gonna cost in this state? And then we can turn around and talk to the business.
And you know something, what's weird is I had my building, well, a building I was renting up on ninety-seven. I had the whole plumbing put in that building for my farm stand, completely done. I was ready to write the guy a check out and the Groveland Plumbing Inspector came in and said it's null and void, you can't use PVC. It has to be copper. And that was Groveland, that wasn't state, we had to rip the whole thing out and start all over again.
Yeah, this is, it's kinda, it's crazy.
You can't have copper in Groveland, you can't have PVC.
It's crazy because PVC actually lasts longer and is a little more durable in the winter, especially since it's a seasonal building, just so you all know.
I don't see why we have a problem because it's not on a foundation, it's basically-
It's a seasonal building.
Seasonal building, it's not, it's not like it's a permanent thing and with the time it's closed.
It is a permanent structure and, and I wanna correct that one too. It was always planned to be a permanent structure, or connections were always planned to be permanent.
Right, so, so some of the issues are, because of the size of the tank, like D E P considers it a portable facility. Because it's under a thousand gallons. So some of the criteria falls under a portable facility, but then the plumbing inspector said because we've connected it to water, now we need hot water, now we need- So some of it is because it's portable and some of it's because we've connected it to the water line that there's kind of a gray area on what code actually covers that building.
Why don't we err on the side of portable and just, you're gonna disconnect it after the season, it will not be in operation in December, right?
It will be shut down, it won't be disconnected, everything stays together, it's just-
There's an anti-freeze unit in it.
It's a full winterizing system, it's completely- Yes, they, they actually-
For two hours again.
Yes, so hopefully I'll have a list tomorrow.
Does the board feel that we should write Sam, the building inspector, a little note saying that we talked about this again tonight? Could you please get that list as soon as-
We don't need that, he's, he was gonna meet with the electrical inspector today, I don't think we need to remind him, he knows he had to get me there.
But can we get it before our meeting on Thursday? Because we set a meeting up, what, the last meeting?
Right.
Juggled schedules for everybody, right? Town's got another little league game.
Right, well, and, and, and I will say, you know, Sam went to the police station, they couldn't find the key. I mean, there was like a whole comedy of errors, so he's gotten out there, he's looked at it, he has his list.
No, the keys are always, have always been at the police station.
Yes, but they called and apologized because they misplaced them.
But if we don't know what we need on Thursday, it's a waste of time.
Correct.
So I don't wanna waste my time.
So press, press Sam just to finish it by Thursday.
Can we get the punch list with a dollar value tomorrow?
Well, I'll give Steve the punch list and he'll put the dollar value.
We can, we can push it together, but I have to have-
Go to Mike.
Yeah, it's no problem.
By Thursday, at six thirty.
If I get it, I can push it, that's it.
Because we can't ask for money with a blank check and it's not gonna fly at CPC.
Wouldn't expect it, but again, it comes down to if we miss this one, we'll have to have it another time. I mean, unfortunately, they have questions too.
Yeah, but I don't think we'll miss it, I think-
You think still?
The builder needs to see what the list is because quite honestly, I, I agree with the builder, sorry. The building inspectors, both building inspectors had the, the plans well before. Same with the health department and every other damn department in this place. They all had them, but all of them just said, yep, yep, I wish they would actually look at the damn plans. Because that's what the problem with this town is, is a lot of people just say, check. And then, and then they come back later and that's why we're always doing these things. It's, it's unprofessional, I've never, as a project manager, I've never had to deal with this issue like this before. It's, I give you plans, you say it's fine, that means it's meeting the code. Give Sam that, you know, he should have stamped it saying, this is the code and I'm fine with it. Or say, have a stamp that says, it has to meet mass state code, or Groveland code or whatever it is. I'm impressed. Sam code, maybe, I don't know.
All right, so we have it, we have, we know we need to go, we need to get it done at a certain time, like if we can, that'd be great. If not, it's gonna be pushed off.
You know, he should have the list by tomorrow morning, if, as long as the electrical inspector, whatever.
I don't wanna go third there if we don't even know what we're asking for.
Just turn around, I'm gonna give it to Burke and I'm gonna give it to Sorenson and they're gonna give me numbers, quick.
Hi, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so we're, we're on selectmen's time, I have one more thing.
Oh, can I just do my stuff?
Yeah, we have finance directors.
I mean, not selectmen, I'm on old business though, I'm sorry. So have we, have we done anything on the land sales, have we?
I, that's only so much time I have. I am like-
See it down the pipeline anywhere?
I do, but I have all these other procurement things that people are like, it's been three years, so I'm trying to chip away at them.
What? I'm just being kidding.
I, it's, it's on my list, but again-
Well, how about if we, if we gave that to Cassandra to have her handle that?
She's the permit.
But she doesn't know anything about procurement or the procurement laws, that's not her specialty.
We just gotta keep chipping, that's all we can do, chip away.
Is there anything else you can delegate to her, take it up your plate?
No, because it's all procurement, that takes the time.
You look like I'm gonna yell at you, but I would never yell at you, never.
I know you would never yell at me, but, you know, and I would never do that, Deborah Stewart, Nine Rollin' Street, you know? Neighbor, whatever, friend, neighbor, and friend of the board. However, I have been kind of approached over the last week at the disappointment of the selectmen board. I'm sorry and I hate to be last minute, you know, bad news, bearer of bad news, but I have also been questioned of why none of the members of the board were at the Memorial Day ceremony last week. I understand baseball, life happens, you know, other commitments, everything else, but it was kinda concerning to a lot of residents why there was no representation at the Memorial Day ceremony last Thursday evening. And it's been, you know, I have multiple purposes of town, be it, you know, you know, friend, whatever. And, you know, I'm a very big selectman friend and I love my board, everything, I voted for all of you. And, but we're all kinda wondering, where was representation come last week? And I, like I said, like I said, life happens, you know, things happen.
I was in Worcester, I had legal training that I had to go to for my court appointment
Okay.
under children receiving assistance.
That's totally- And, 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 and I do not wanna-
Maniac to get to Raleigh to watch my kids baseball.
Right, I don't, and I don't wanna start an argument, this has been a very long evening and I've watched most of it at night tonight. But I just wanna say one small thing, as a board that's asking for volatile terrorism in town, everything else. Us as town members and who've lived here forever, we just, just a little bit more support. us as town members and who've lived here forever, we just, just a little bit more support. We're just asking for a little bit more support and just, you know.
Support, it's ten thirty.
I, I understand that, I know, and I'm tired too, I've been up since four thirty this morning too.
Comment on that, right? So, as a father, I'm with Dan, I would like to see my son play baseball, it happened to be Thursday night.
Right, right. That's true, that's true.
It came up early, I'm not, I'm not yelling at you, it came up earlier tonight with some guy was yelling at us. This is a volunteer position that we make twenty-three cents an hour by the way we put all the hours in.
You make more than the, somebody, somebody on the cemetery commission, thank you.
So, do I, do I regret not showing up for that? Yes, did I miss it? Yes, but I am a dad.
Exactly, exactly, but I just.
And this is a volunteer position that I am here at ten thirty on a Tuesday night.
Exactly, hey, guess what? I'm here as a representative of the town at ten thirty a night who has a life too.
Right.
So, we all have lives, we all have other commitments, but just as a member of this town who's lived here for forty-five, almost forty-six years, not to give my age, but anyways, as we have all lived here, Dan, you've lived here long, Ed, you've lived here long, everybody's all, Mike, you and I went to school together.
Yep.
Okay, so, all I'm asking in return is just, you know, when it comes up to, when you guys ask for volunteerism, we ask for, once in a while, once a member of the Selectmen Board, to show up. That's all we ask.
I know, I was in Boston.
I, okay.
I think I was cutting grass, so.
Like I said, you know what?
Here's the thing, you know, I respect veterans, I respect people that died for this country.
We all know you do, we know this whole board does.
You know, but, you know, here's the thing, you know, to get people on the board of Selectmen that aren't all retirees.
Yep.
Okay?
To get.
That aren't all retirees, okay?
I'll tell you right now, to get any member on any board in this whole town.
To get young people that work and have kids and everything else, it's a juggle, it's a juggle.
Hi, guess what? I work a full-time job for municipality in a neighboring city, alright, and guess what?
But I've complained about your service.
Oh, I know, I know, I know you're not, Dan. Dan, Dan, and I respect you a hundred percent, you know that. And I respect every member on this board and I respect every member in this town. But, when it comes down to brass tacks, okay, on Thursday night, when there was less than, there was more people at that ballpark, there were more people at Shanahan Field than were standing on that town complex for their veterans, alright, that served this town. There's an issue there, okay? And I'm not saying that anybody in this town disrespects any of their veterans, but I'll tell you right now, I'm sorry, there was former Selectmen, there were former members of this town that were there, okay? But, at the end of the day, all we wanted was one member of the current board there. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Let me suggest this, if you're gonna have Memorial Day services, have them on Memorial Day, okay?
We can't always do that.
Well, well, you know what, I can't reschedule by, 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 uh, court trading.
Right, right.
Two days a year to do that. I can't schedule the Little League games, my kids come first, my kids come first, my kids come first. Anyone who doesn't like that, my kids come first.
Right.
So.
So, doesn't, my dad, who was a Vietnam vet, so wasn't a lot of other guys in this town.
My father was drafted for Korea, my grandfather was a C V in the Navy.
Exactly, so, okay, we're not, we're not, we're not arguing, we're not arguing.
We don't need a one-up one who's a patriot here.
Exactly, exactly.
But.
It's getting late, it's almost eleven o'clock.
Thank you.
But scheduling that ceremony Thursday at five o'clock, setting up a family.
It wasn't, it was sort of.
As a chairman of the board, I will apologize. I'm not gonna say where I was, I don't think I have to say where I was, what I was doing.
Nope.
I apologize.
And, and you know what?
Let me just finish, it ended up that everyone on the board was busy, it was talked about the meeting before, no one could go, for whatever reason. I know that there was a past Selectmen person there, whatever.
Exactly.
Moving on in the future, we will be more, um, up on tact and try to, and as far as I'm here, I'll make sure next time we have a representative.
And Bill?
And, and I will.
Thank you, that's all I have to say is thank you for that.
I think Ed and I had this conversation and Ed said, I can't make it, and I said, Ed, I got, what I gotta do? But guess what? I said, well, a past Select person always went there anyway, wonder if he could be. And I was honestly, I was gonna pick up the phone and call him and say, are you going?
Right.
Busy, I got busy and I didn't call him, I like, ah.
All I have to say is, thank you for the apology.
Yep.
Dan, I don't wanna say, it's nothing disrespectful.
My family was in the service too.
That's fine, that's fine. And I'm not meaning any disrespect between anybody on the board or any past, whatever. Bill, thank you, and that's all I have to say.
One other, to your point, like you just said.
I don't need to hear it.
Alright, Dan, what, what?
No, we've been criticized all night for not respecting the citizens and what they want, it's crap, it's straight up crap.
Dan, Dan.
I'm on the record, it's crap.
Alright, alright, stop.
I'm not saying you don't.
You want Memorial Day services, have them on Memorial Day, they'll show up.
Dan, enough.
Thursday night at five, give it a break.
But I'm not saying you just.
It's just stupidity.
Alright, Dan, enough, enough, Dan, stop, I'm saying stop.
I had enough, you blew up early, I'm blowing up now, we cut the meeting short at ten forty.
I didn't, I didn't throw my pen at, I didn't yell, I said my.
And I'm not saying that any Selectmen was disrespectful.
Just calm down, that's all I'm asking. Dan, let me just say something, let me say something, to your point.
Yes.
You were saying about how people don't come out on behalf of the veterans, more people at the ball field. Let me say something, it's the same thing with voting.
Exactly, I agree, a hundred percent.
How many people live in this town and nearly nine hundred people vote?
I'm a hundred percent agree.
So, you know what I mean? Again, I'm gonna apologize, just leave it here, it's late, everyone's getting tired. I apologize, that's all I can say, next time, me as chair, I will make sure, I was, I was going to call the person that always went and spoke and, and I didn't, I was busy, it's a busy time of year, I didn't, so.
Can I just ask one thing, just quickly, why was it Thursday night?
I don't know, you'd have to ask the veterans, you would have to ask the American Legion. That part, I don't know why it was on Thursday night, but it was on Thursday at six thirty P M.
It's been Thursday since I've been here, I don't know why.
It's been Thursday night for years, yes, so it's not just mine.
So, what do I say to those guys, you don't like children, you don't like baseball, I mean, what is that?
Dan, it, it, hold, 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 hold. And it's nothing personal against you.
You're anti-family, anti-children, you know.
No, well, that's the thing, well, you know what, I would say that, but you know what? There were a lot of people with their families all there, so, it wasn't just that. It wasn't just about, and it's not a personal attack against you personally.
Sounds like it.
Well, it's not, because I never said anything about you or your kids, so, it's not about any personal attack, it's just, we were just wondering why there wasn't any representation from this board. There is five members, you're one of five.
Very poor scheduling.
Alright.
There you go.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you and I thank you for listening.
Alright, no problem.
Have a good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, alright, so, um, correspondence, we have the minutes from the May sixteen, two thousand sixteen meeting. We have a. Yep, go ahead, buddy, go get it. You want mine? And I have a report on the voting code. Effectiveness grading schedule, survey results, and annual appointment list, which that's important because we have all the up, the upcoming appointments.
Yes, so I, I gave you the appointment list. My plan is, I think, on the next meeting, I'll have the boards and committees up for appointment. And then the following meeting, there's only a handful of employees, um, it's usually police reserves, fire department, um, for employees that need to be reappointed, so, I've put them in order by committee. I've highlighted where there are vacancies, um, all of these, um, unless the appointing authority is not the Selectmen, which there are only a handful that get appointed by other committees, but all of these are up for reappointment.
And I know before, when the appointments come up last time, that it wasn't, it wasn't like, I don't know what happened, but some people felt like we should've talked about it more, we didn't talk about it, whatever. Appointments were made that shouldn't have been made, whatever. Now's our time, the list is in front of us, let's get a good look at them and, and, um, we'll have a good discussion on it. Um, letter from the E P, take my glasses off, I can read. Letters from the E P Management Corp regarding the Groveland Housing Authority. I don't know what that's all.
I don't know if that has anything to do with the town of Groveland, but they copied you on it. Um, it seems like it's an issue between the Groveland Commons and the Housing Authority and they're fighting over a broken fence. Why they chose to send a copy to this board, I don't know, but I, obviously, it was addressed to you guys, so, I don't know if it's our property.
The fence benders.
It could be that piece of land that's between the two.
And that's what it seems to be, there's a fence that's broken and people are cutting through. I'm assuming it's the Groving, Groveland Housing Authority.
Is it our fence or their fence?
No, I think it's the Housing Authority, on that side, which is.
This is the area right behind the, uh, the conflict, yeah, the fight.
Yeah, so, I, I think they've sent a letter, but haven't gotten a response to the Housing Authority, so they're looking for another avenue.
Can we just send a copy of the letter to them?
Back to the Housing Authority?
Send it from the Selectmen to them. Okay, we have a letter, um, from the Board of Health regarding a grant used to purchase, um, automated external defibrillator for the town hall.
I don't, I don't have the copy of that letter.
Oh, I apologize, that was late today. Oh, no, I left you a copy under your agenda, your revised agenda, I left you a copy. Um, the, um, so, the A E D has, the A, the A E D has been ordered and was delivered.
I'll start yelling if I drink yours.
Ed, do you have your revised agenda? It should be with that, the final one that I left tonight.
Okay.
It should've been under that. So, the A E D has been ordered by the grant. Um, I have it in my office, I'm waiting on a, um, case, an alarmed case that will be mounted in the building with that in it. So, if anyone opens up the case, you'll hear the alarm go off, you know that someone's in distress. So, so that's here, that's in the, in the town hall.
Okay. Alright, so, we get that taken care of, so now we're on to Finance Director's time.
Very quickly, um, some communities have reached out, they want to, I know we talked about this briefly months ago, and they wanna start looking into some regional contracts. Um, some commu, neighboring communities wanna look at trash, so, our contract doesn't expire until June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. So, leading up to that, we're looking into getting into like a multi-town trash contract to see if we can get a better price if one company is coming out here, so that's in the works. Um.
Well, that, that number, that's a big number that we use in the town, that's seven hundred thousand or whatever it is. I mean, that would should be a number that I've always thought we should take a good look at.
Well, it does go out to bid, but the last bid was a five-year bid.
You know, maybe we talked about, before we talked about, um, you know, have, let's do, we bring their leaves here, maybe we should have our residents bring their trash to the town if they saved a lot of money in the tax bill, whatever, you know what I mean? I know, it's something to look at.
Well, that's what I mean, and we think that because right now, all the surrounding communities have individual trash companies. So, if we can get one that services two or three communities, you know, they'll only come out to this community, you know, it might save costs if they have multiple contracts. So, that's just some things we're looking at to save money because it is a large expenditure. Um, CPA money, the cemetery arch structural repair, that bid went out last Wednesday, it was advertised last Wednesday, so just so you know, that project's coming down, um, bids are due on that on June fifteenth. Finally, uh, just to keep you updated, a hundred and twenty-six real estate demand bills and nineteen personal property demand bills went in the mail today. Um, they have a due date of June fifteenth for a total of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in back taxes for this fiscal year. So, if they don't pay it by June fifteenth, the next step will be a letter of advertising and we'll go through that process again where the properties are advertised. I expect advertising to take place in September, so everyone has fair warning, it's May. Um, they will get letters in July, giving them the timeline to pay and then we will advertise in early September. So, just so you know, that's where that process is.
So, real estate tax is not excised?
No, excise goes, goes out to demand regularly, so this is just real estate, we only, you only do real estate demands at the end of the fiscal year.
It worked out pretty good last year.
Well, the last day when people decided to pay.
So, just. We will have a lien on these people if they don't pay, yes.
When we have land on Salem Street, we can't sell.
Why not?
Cause you don't wanna have her work on it.
I told her to work on it, move that up.
Start yelling back and forth.
No, put that, put that right way like a hundred ahead of the gas station project.
That's, that's all I have. That's all I have.
That's all? Alright, so, anyone have any on the Selectmen's time?
Uh, just, I, I, I just got, uh, ten or twelve items, but I'll hold them for next week.
Can I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
The guys that, the guys on the Tigers, not at G B L, before I left in the fourth inning, they come here to serve the people of Groveland, this great town, thank you.